To our July 2nd Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. We will do a few changes. We will have the minutes to approve at our next meeting, so I won't ask anybody to make a motion on the minutes. The first item on the agenda is SD 1819, a multiple occupancy review for a new bank, retail Echo Rouge, a six-unit project, basically in the Agave Shopping Center parking lot out there. Where did that shopping center's called?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. And as the Chairman stated, this project occurs, this is a multiple occupancy project, which falls underneath provisions of the subdivision regulations. This occurs along Greeno Road. This is in the site of the former Food World Shopping Center. And we'll go through the basic, the basic project details, first of all. We'll get to, in future slides, we'll explain the condominium portion of this in a future slide. Fairhope Group LLC, the applicant, Mr. Davidson, Mr. Trotter. This is zoned in the B2 General Business District. This fronts upon Greeno Road, 5.76 acres of the total site, and as we stated earlier, the former Food World Grocery Store Shopping Center locations. .8 acres would be modified by the project. Mr. Cummings is here with us tonight. He is the engineer of record with Hutchinson, Moore &amp; Rowell. As we stated, a multiple occupancy project, Article 4, Section H of subdivision regulations, cross rest of specific sections of the subdivision regulations for an MOP. So this lives within the subdivision regulations. There are some triggers for final closeout of an MOP that must be accomplished. That will bring us to conditions of approval that we'll see when we get to the approval. Fairhope Group LLC is the declarant of the condominium. There is a condominium agreement in place for ownership purposes of the existing units. And as you see in your slides right there, the existing condominium contains three units. Unit two is the building formerly containing the grocery store. Then, unit one contains a restaurant. And, let's see, subject property, this is owned by the Fairhope Single Tax. The application, they wish to add three units to the existing site utilizing the MOP process, as well as add two, add new units to the condominium declaration. That is an additional case behind this one. I'll explain momentarily. Looking at the site here, Chairman Commissioners, you see the site overlaid, so that way you can see the proposed buildings of the MOP in relation to the existing parking lot. Also, a couple photos you see on the far right, one looking to the northwest, one looking almost due south. I'll call your attention to it here, because we have it on the drawings, the four low-impact development or LID techniques. I've noted here, they're utilizing pervious pavers. They also have a bio-retention area. And that bio-retention area also includes level spreaders. And it's encompassed within a vegetated area, an infiltration basin. In our regulations, it calls it a vegetated swale. Here we have an aerial photograph of the same site, and I apologize, it's a bit difficult to see, but the drawing is overlaid, the aerial image, as you can see right there. Provides some additional background information. And this is for the commission's information here. We're understanding, staff was notified that there is a not-exclusive easement for ingress, egress, and parking in place for the subject property. The owner information right there is in your slides and when it was recorded. And what we want to do here is just advise the staff that in the event of a conflict, a potential conflict regarding that easement and the access to that property, that would not preclude staff or the planning commission from considering a case not affecting the subdivision regulations or zoning ordinance. So, the subject application maintains the existing points of ingress or egress. The site information right here, we've copied the site data table from the drawings. The notes here, the engineer of record advised a traffic study is not required due to the trip generation. Our City of Fairhope horticulturalist reviewed the landscape plans, reviewed and approved them. Note, there is an additional 10-foot landscape buffer contiguous with the right-of-way. That is required by the tree landscape ordinance. In this case, because it falls along Greeno Road, that is reflected in the landscape ordinance. The Public Works Director reviewed the drainage calculations and the LID techniques. What we also want to note here, the net decrease of impervious surface is caused by this development. And as well as the fact that it's less than 10,000 square feet, this would be 9,600 square feet approximately. Because of that, a formal site plan review is not triggered by this application. With that in mind, it brings us to the staff recommendation. This is a multiple occupancy project to fulfill the final inspection requirements of the articles you see there in the subdivision regulations. Staff recommendations for approval, subject to the conditions, as you see there, one, a pre-construction conference. We're noting here that the building official will assist with the sequencing of the buildings and illuminate the site stabilization requirements, and will clarify the closeout process during that pre-construction conference. And Chairman Commissioners here, I notice here that we do have a waiver request for LID techniques, as we saw on the previous drawing there, including pervious pavers, bio-retention level spreaders, and a vegetated swale slash infiltration basin in an island on the subject, on the subject property. As you can tell, of course, this is occurring within a very large existing paved parking lot, so there's very limited application for LID techniques in this case. And then we have some other conditions of approval here, including the building permit plans, elevations necessary to check the screening requirements. We also have prior to land disturbance, we want to coordinate any tree protections that may be required by the horticulturalist. Though we have an approved, have an approved landscape plan, we want to make certain that any of the right-of-way trees, just make certain that the horticulturist, if he has any requirements for some additional tree protection, he has the opportunity to review that. The building official is requiring an elevation certificate, which you see in there, number five. That area actually falls within an AE flood hazard zone. Number six, we have a minor, we have a minor revision to an erosion control note that would need to be reflected in the four construction plans. And then Chairman Commissioners, number seven are our standard closeout procedures that we reflect whenever we have an MOP. This is necessary to initiate closeout when we have an MOP. One of them being the item E, the copy of landscape as-built, as-built drawings. And then A, if there's a maintenance bond required, we're not anticipating any items to be dedicated to the City of Fairhope, but we have that in there as a standard requirement should something occur. And then finally, approval of case number SD 18.20, the Echo Rouge Place Condominium. This is needed because the units to be created by the MOP have condominium lot lines created, recorded, and added to the Echo Rouge Place Declaration of Condominium. So we make that a condition of approval in this item. And then we'll come before you, the next item on the agenda will be the actual condominium plat request, which I'll explain in greater detail. And Chairman Commissioners, I'll be happy to answer any questions before we turn it over to the engineer, if you have any questions of staff.
I do. This is case SD 1819 and 1820, but these aren't really subdivisions, these are MOPs.
Yes, sir. So, SD 18.19 is a MOP, an MOP, falls within the subdivision regulations, so we give it an SD case number. SD 18.20, when we get to that case, I'll explain it in greater detail, but essentially, the subdivision regulations for buildings constructed after 2001 requires a plat process for a condominium declaration. That also being inhabited by, inhabited within the subdivision regulations.
Okay. I was wondering why we had two, and that answers my question. Any other questions for Buford?
Yeah, I just had a clarification that I think may be a really simple answer, but...
Can you talk into the mic, Rebecca?
Yes. I just wanted you to clarify something. I think it's a vast improvement on the Sea of Par, I'm glad to see this in front of us and think it, for our, you know, primary intersection, it'll be great to have more buildings for the impervious area, you get more bang for your buck. But I wanted to understand, you know, we have a requirement that a certain percentage of parking spaces be impervious, but within this condominium, there's only 15 spaces. And so, the pervious spaces are just being treated as an LID. Is there no additional requirement to have pervious spaces, just because there's so few inside the, the condominium, inside those particular lots?
And Mr. Chairman, when we're evaluating this case, this is a bit of an oddity, because we're considering, we're considering a development within an existing development. So, and I moved back to this drawing right here, and I apologize, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, for not illuminating it better. The pervious pavers are occurring at all brand-new parking spots created for the development. The remaining parking area that you see is the remnant of the site. In evaluating how to comply, or how to apply the conditions of this particular site, after we vetted it, we determined that we would consider the area disturbed within the development. And so, in this case, every single parking space furnished with the development is of impervious material.
Okay. So you're not considering the remaining, the remaining parking spaces that are existing or outside of the scope?
And Mr. Chairman, oh, I'm sorry, Wayne.
Yeah, I mean, the project is just a small .8 acres. I don't think that allows us to open up the whole development to our requirements.
Sure. And I'm not advocating that we do. And I guess the answer to my question is there's too few parking spaces to trigger the requirement for a certain percentage of them to be, I mean, they're pervious anyway. I just wanted to know how to think about it.
And also, we did look at the existing uses and the parking demand on those to ensure that we're, there are no loss of required parking, and they, this project was overparked. And so, even with the buildings, the development still has the needed parking spaces to meet the current regulations.
Thank you for answering the question I was going to ask, yeah.
And Mr. Chairman, I moved back, as Wayne was discussing, I moved back to the slide, and it's a bit small, so I'm sorry, you may not be seeing it very correctly. But as Wayne was saying, this is the parking, this is the entire site analysis, and we vetted the number of parking spaces. And to add to Wayne's statement, we also vetted the application of the, we mentioned earlier how the horticulturist had reviewed the landscaping plans. We vetted that to make certain, and we did not see and did not believe there was a trigger that would force upgrading the entire site, that it would be an overreach to try to apply it to the entire site, the way the language and the way, the way the language is assembled in that ordinance.
Sounds reasonable. Thank you, Buford. Anybody here wish to speak on behalf of the developer?
I'm Robert Cummings with HMR. Staff's report is, staff's report is quite detailed, so I'm not going to add much to it. I will only add that this is a project that this body has already approved once in a one-building configuration. The only reason we're here at nine is we're asking for three buildings. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
That'll be great. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing up, and they call you back. I don't have anybody I don't believe listed on this item, but if anybody wishes to speak to this item, this is your chance. All right. If not, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn this over to the commissioners.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion to approve subject to staff recommendations. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
I have a question. Does that specifically approve the waiver for the LID?
Yes, yes.
And the conditions, Dan?
And the rest of the conditions?
Yes. Subject to staff recommendations.
Now, I have one more question. Buford, my staff report only shows six conditions.
He mentioned seven.
You have eight. I think number four on your list, I'm just trying to make sure that mine don't...
Because we only, we only had six on ours.
So, I don't, your number four is different than my number four. My number four is number five on your list.
Okay.
I'll suggest that staff recommendation include the slide that's in front of you, and we'll use that as the basis, if that's amenable to the planning commission.
That's fine.
Yes, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. My apologies for a Scrivener's error.
That's all right. All right. SD 1820, want to start that while you're still up there?
And, and Mr. Chairman Commissioners, this is the complementary case for SD 18.19 for the same site. And let me explain the origin that causes this item to be on the agenda, and I'll just very, I'll just very quickly read to you the item on the slide. In the City of Fairhope subdivision regulations, a condominium development as a real estate portions of which are designated for separate ownership and the remainder of which is designated by common ownership solely by the owners of those portions. The development type is hereby subject to the same development reviews and procedures as a conventional subdivision. Condominium developments shall submit a plat that adheres to the requirements established in this document. Existing buildings as of September 2001 in the city limits and the ETJ, extraterritorial jurisdiction are exempt from those procedures. Additionally, the Central Business District, as defined in the zoning ordinance, exempt from these procedures. So, we have the subject application, as we said, is complementary to case 19. The desire is to create lots or lease lines required for the condominium declaration. The desire is to add additional condominium units to the existing declaration condominium. These are not lots of record, but they do have lease lines needed for the condominium declaration, must be created by the subdivision process. So therefore, we have this item for review. It's similar, and this recommendation is similar to a minor subdivision, so we're asking for both preliminary and final plat approval concurrently. Does not create loss of record or require the installation of infrastructure typically associated with a typical subdivision, but this does satisfy the requirements that allow the instrument declaring the condominium to be properly recorded. And as we saw, the infrastructure improvements, the construction items will be handled by case 19. What I have here is just a sample of, this is the cover of the existing condominium declaration for the existing condominium units on the site. And the small inset drawing you see on your right would be proposed new condominium units for ownership purposes of those units when they're created. Brings us to a staff recommendation. Staff recommends preliminary and final plat approval of the three condominium units subject to the condition below, which has been satisfied by the approval of case SD 18.19. So this will close the circle to allow the ownership instrument to exist for the condominium units for the site.
Thank you, Buford. Do you have anything to add to that?
Appreciate your staff. Go ahead, Commissioner.
All right. In that case, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Anybody wish to speak to this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing and turn SD 1820 over to the commissioners.
Motion, Mr. Chairman. I've referenced case SD 18.20, Echo Rouge Place Condominium. I move that planning commission approves subject to staff recommendations.
I have a motion to approve subject to staff recommendations. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Charles Johnson. Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
For staff, again. Would these six condominiums be leased separately? It looks like there's still only three, but it says on paper, there's six. Or they'd be, would it have to be six individual contracts on those?
There are, there are two units in each space, so yes.
So they would be, okay. That satisfies my, okay, good.
Anything else? Not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right. Next item on the agenda is public hearing to consider the request of Sawgrass Consulting for preliminary plat approval of Twin Beach Estates, a 72-lot subdivision. The property is located on the north side of County Road 44, just west of Highway 181.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Twin Beach Estates. This is a major subdivision at the location you see in the slide before you. We'll go through, we'll go through a brief history on the site, because this is the first appearance of this item as a subdivision. We have considered it, we have considered it previously for zoning purposes. The rezoning request from unzoned Baldwin County to City of Fairhope PUD was approved by the planning commission on May 7. The city council approval of that case, which is ZC 18.02, is still pending. The request, of course, is a PUD, a planned unit development. This is .2 miles, approximately .2 miles west of Alabama Highway 181 on Twin Beach Road, also County Road 44. LA Development, care of Mr. Matt Byrne, is the developer. Sawgrass Consulting is the engineering firm. Mr. Doug Chaffin is the engineer of record. Approximately 22.6 acres, requesting 72 lots. That generates a proposed density of 3.19 units per acre. And just to, just as a brief reminder, that that is down from an original consideration of 78 lots and 3.45 units per acre. Some additional, some additional background in the subdivision itself. We described the acreage and the lot count originally. Minimum lot size would be 6,240 square feet. The minimum lot width, 52 feet. The setbacks reflected in this subdivision are 20 feet front, 15 feet rear, 16, 6 feet, 6 feet on each side, with one exception, and that's between lots 21 and 22. Mr. Peterson, Mr. Peterson requested an additional, requested a utility easement for future expansion, so they will have 7.5 feet side setbacks on either side of those lots to allow that easement, side street being 20 feet. Lot coverage would be 55 percent, maximum building height of 30 feet. And you'll notice that the, you'll notice that the accessory structure requirements mirror that of the zoning ordinance, as well as the lot coverage of the accessory structure at 25 percent. 30 feet maximum on your accessory structure, it's no higher than the principal structure. There is a slight, slightly smaller than in the zoning ordinance here incorporated to this PUD, that the structure separation from the primary structure would be 5 feet. We have here, we wanted to include the typical road section here, just to illuminate for the commission, that, one, this is in compliant with City of Fairhope requirements, the, and with the assistance of Mr. Johnson helping review this. This will actually have 18-foot wide paving. Also, the traffic calming devices are included in this development, so they're using some speed tables. We included a detail of that in the lower right-hand corner of your drawing right there. We want to illuminate also for the commission the sidewalks along the right-of-way. So there's a 10-foot sidewalk easement included in the common area, and the, in the common area slash landscape buffer along Twin Beach Road. And what we did here is took a capture of the plat and then provided two details showing you the turnout in connection to the right-of-way. So we do have the sidewalks along Twin Beach Road, as well as within the development. And Chairman Commissioners will explain the LID techniques for this, for this development. There is a request for waiver of LID techniques associated with this development. What we'd like to do is explain those that are being utilized. And there are five LID techniques utilized in eight locations. What you see on this slide, and again, my apologies for the size, the drawing is an inset map, that is the entire site plan. And what we'll do is in future slides, we'll zoom in on the individual LID techniques. Now, the chart you see on the left is a capture from the subdivision regulations. Those are the pre-approved BMPs, best management practices, that are also low-impact development techniques. As you'll recall from previous discussions, a focus of drainage is total suspended solids removal, TSS. What you'll see is that each technique they've selected removes 80 percent of the total suspended solids, with the exception of their dry detention basin, which removes 60 percent. We'll explain that, how that's used in just a moment. They are utilizing grass swales. They've labeled them BMP number one, number four, and number seven. So they're utilizing grass swales in three different locations. That removes 80 percent total suspended solids. As a supporting document, I included a chart from Planning for Stormwater: Developing a Low-Impact Solution, which is a publication of the Alabama Cooperative Extension Service. It's informally referred to as the Alabama LID Handbook. And you'll notice that their research from different sources is in agreement with the subdivision regulations. In addition, they're utilizing enhanced swales. They're utilizing, they're labeled BMP one, BMP four, BMP seven. Those are grass-enhanced swales. The details at the bottom of the slide show the individual locations of that LID technique. They're also utilizing a dry detention basin. This is BMP number two. You'll see the image zoomed in shows its location. I have a note in here, BMP number two is calculated by the engineer of record, removes 36.6 percent of TSS due to its volume. However, BMP number, BMP number two receives treated stormwater from BMP number one, which is 80, which is an 80 percent TSS removal technique, and discharges into BMP number three, which is an 80 percent TSS removal technique. And then we also have an additional LID technique right here. We're talking about the different treatment volumes shown right here. And then, you'll notice here BMP number three, BMP number five, and I give you here the treatment volume, and also its removal, pollutant removal table from, borrowed from the Alabama LID technique. And then finally, we have an organic filter, BMP number six, and its TSS removal. And you'll notice there, I've also added a note here about the tree protection, that the, note the tree, this occurred on this same drawing, I wanted to illuminate here. The tree protection requirements for the existing tree buffer will be maintained, and they noted it here. It was convenient, I wanted to illuminate that right here. We also have a wet pond, BMP number eight, and you'll notice here, 80 to 85 percent TSS removal backed up by the Alabama LID handbook. So in summary, wanted to illuminate for the planning, illuminate for the planning commission here, how you calculate treatment volume. And this is the equation which is derived. And basically, the equation for calculating water treatment volume is based upon, must be designed to treat 85 percent of the annual stormwater runoff, must be designed to treat the runoff from the first 1.8 inches of rainfall, utilizing that equation. Impervious cover is utilized in each one of these. So each one of these techniques has had this calculation applied to calculate its volume. The engineer would vary his impervious cover depending upon the area, which might be 43 percent in one area, 53 percent in another, all detailed in his stormwater calculations. This, this chart right here summarizes all of the different locations where they're using it, the TSS removal for each one. This is derived right out of the engineer's stormwater calculations manual. So I'll have some, saying all that, let's get to an LID technique conclusion. Five LID techniques are used in eight locations on the entire site. What I want to emphasize is the entire treatment volume has been accounted for in the stormwater design. With the exception of number two, all the LID techniques have at least 80 percent TSS removal based upon the data that we have. BMP number two is calculated by the engineer of record at 36.6 percent, as we talked about earlier. Basically, the goal of Article 5, Section F8F in the subdivision regulations, the BMPs to attain 80 percent TSS removal, this submitted system is designed to meet that 80 percent TSS removal goal. We'll talk briefly about some of the techniques not utilized on the site, such as rain gardens, which is typically a small-scale treatment system, permeable pavement systems, and sand filter, which is typically a small-scale drainage treatment requirement. The grass buffers, they used, they elected to use grass swales in lieu of grass buffers on the site. Constructed wetlands or channels, and this is, this is just a staff member's remark here, but it can be argued that a wet pond included on the site also acts as a constructed wetland. That could possibly be another credit right there. Your step pools, your site design for habitat, your restoration of habitat, wetlands, or water bodies, none of those features occur on the site to be considered. As far as greenways are concerned, again, it could be argued that the, the areas encompassing the enhanced grass swales are also greenways, possibly allowing credit for one additional LID technique. The channel morphology is a, is a feature that doesn't exist on the site, and it can be argued that the detention basin discharging into the bio-retention basin acts as a level Based upon all of this data, staff has a recommendation of approval with two conditions of approval. One is city council approval of case ZC 18.02, which is the annexation of the subject properties and the rezoning to PUD that we talked about previously. And of course, waiver of the five of the 10 LID techniques required by the subdivision regulations. Again, five LID techniques are utilized in eight locations on the site, as described in the previous slides. And Chairman Commissioners, Mr. Doug Chaffin is the... And Chairman Commissioners, Mr. Doug Chaffin is the engineer of record for, with Sawgrass Engineering, is the engineer of record for the development. But before we turn it over to the engineer, I'm certainly happy to provide any answers to, answers to questions as a staff member.
Yeah, I've got, I've got a question. You go ahead, Jack.
I got several. I see a common area on here, and you know, you went through the, the best practices, the BMPs, and you know, how much of the common area is taken up by handling of, of water? Because, and I'm going to be very frank with y'all, I'm really tired of seeing vanilla subdivisions where they call it a common area and it's not green space at all. It's just being used by the developer to handle their water issues, usually stuck in a corner somewhere. Kids don't have anywhere to run around and play. So what do our subdivision regulations say about green space? And are we just going to continue to allow developers to use common area or what should be real green space to handle their stormwater management and then sit there and call it a common area? It's ridiculous.
And Chairman Commissioners, I'll defer, I'll defer the technical answer to that to the engineer. What I will say though is that in the process of evaluating the site, is that the site data table, they give us a detailed site data table breaking down the green space and green space requirements. And so the acreage percentage of the green space shown in that site data table is, is adequate and within, in, within the requirements of the subdivision regulations. From the tech, the technical answer, I'll defer that to the engineer.
I, I have just a request that would help it, make it easier, because this has come up on several projects, and we're looking at this, you know, there's topography on this, on this plan, but, but the LID is not overlaid with the common area. And if, if, we, we need both documents, really.
Yep.
Understood.
Just for future.
Understood. The, and Chairman Commissioners, the, the applicants furnish us an aerial, and they provide us a topographic overlay, so we can furnish that with the, with the packets for the commissioners in the future.
Jack, Jack, did you have something else?
No, I just, Rebecca, you know, put it in a very good way as well. We just need to see. I want to see how much of that common area, which is not called green space, is called common area, is taken up by all these LED techniques.
It's hard to see in this little, can we enlarge this tiny little plan?
Why don't we call the engineer up and then have the public hearing?
I've got.
And then bring the engineer back up, because they have all of that.
Question for staff also. Wait, wait just a second. Who reviews, Richard, do you review the, the traffic data?
I do, yes.
Can I ask you a question, please? It says, it says under, under the subdivision regulations where you're going through each and every one of the various detailed issues, state or county right-of-way detailed highway improvements plan. And it says revised and resubmit per comments, not furnished, this may not be required depending upon the results of the traffic study, also not furnished. And then in, in blue, it says, "The traffic study prepared by Gulf Coast Traffic and Development Services, LLC does not recommend improvements to Twin Beach Road." Do you concur with that? Because let me, let me, wait, wait. Twin Beach Road down at Greeno Road has got the high school at it. You've also got the soccer fields there. You've also got several major subdivisions that enter out on the Twin Beach Road to the west of the, the subject property here. Now you've got 72 lots entering Twin Beach Road with one access point. And, and, and the traffic study says that it shouldn't be any turn lanes or no improvements to Twin Beach Road at this juncture?
And, and yes, it does. It, it says, and, and the controlling thing that I was looking for is, is, the biggest issue is a person who is coming to this neighborhood, who is heading eastbound on Twin Beach, is going to have to make a left turn.
Right.
And that is where the potential for traffic blockage or queuing can occur, meaning that as that person is sitting in the, in the travel lane wanting to turn left north into the new development, and if westbound traffic is coming off of 181 heading that way, what you would see is, is queuing behind that car. So you're slowing down the through lane of, of Twin Beach Road. But you know, Kenny Nichols is the traffic engineer that did that, and after reviewing, that he, he looked at everything that we have to look for, and that was, what are the current counts? What are the nodes at 181 and Twin Beach and 13 and Twin Beach? And what is the, what is going to be the turning movement during the, the peak times going into this proposed development? And it did not warrant a left turn lane.
And, and my question is, do you agree with that?
I, I agree that the numbers are correct, and, and it does not meet a warrant. And, and I talked with the development engineer, that was a big concern, that whether it's warranted today, if it's needed or not, and probably in the future, it, it is. And you know, again, I would love to see a left turn lane as part of this, as a minimum improvement, but by the standards of our subdivision regulations, they, they met the, they met the requirement that came back that says not warrant. And I believe that the information and the data used by the traffic engineer was correct and meets the standard of care.
Okay, let me ask you this, just one more question. In the future, when Twin Beach really gets to the point of being a, a, a major block up, kind of like Highway 64 over around 181 now, whose responsibility, will it be the city's respons, well, actually, that's in the county, isn't it?
That section is still a county road.
Right, right.
And you know, because we, we maintain Twin Beach, I think, only to 13. So from, they're going to 181 is not a city-maintained road.
All right, but this one's coming into, this, this subdivision's come?
The property is coming into the city, yes. Or at least there's a request for annexation and, and pre-zoning.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a quick comment? I want to speak about the green space. We certainly share the concern of the planning commission. There are certain design objectives that are in the subdivision regulations, and the feedback we get from you certainly makes that easier for us to implement that, because they are a bit subjective when you look at them, but hearing from the planning commission helps us formulate a better idea of what, what you all want to see as far as the green space. I do want to make note of, of a couple of things that are from the, the subregs, make sure we, that, and this was looked at and evaluated by staff, but basically it says eligible green space, and it lists several things you cannot count as green space, and one of those is retention, detention, and similar holding basins. And so that, those areas are not eligible for green space. Now certainly, we could do a better job of ensuring that it is usable, it's for active, and, and it meets the objectives of, of the comp plan and also the, the, of the subregs. But you know, like, for example, wetlands can't be included in the green space, flood zones can't be included in, in the green space. And so, but we'll certainly do a, do a much more diligent job of trying to implement the design objectives as, as you all have commented on. Just want to make that note, Mr. Chairman.
Well, this one has a couple of different common areas. Some are obviously green space for the enjoyment of the people who live in the subdivision. Others are buffer areas to help the enjoyment of the people surrounding the subdivision, trying to help it blend in better, so.
And, and Mr. Chairman, the, the subregs reference the conference of plan and also some other design objectives. I think what we'll do as staff is we'll sit down and kind of create a check sheet, checklist for that and go through that, and to ensure that these are being met and that they are sort of implementing the vision of the planning commission, and we'll be sure that that's done. And so when we meet with people ahead of time, they'll know well in advance of what the, what those are. Because many times, these, these design objectives are a little bit obtuse sometimes, and so any kind of definition that the planning commission gives as far as their interpretation of that will be helpful to us, and we'll certainly include those and start using those.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask staff a question then? So, so following up on that, the subdivision regulations say that certain, certain pieces of, can't be considered as, as green space.
Yes, sir.
If this was not a PUD, would this meet the subdivision regulations?
Mr. Chief is telling me that it would.
Okay.
And that's one thing with the PUD, we try to look at the, you know, the PUD gives you certain criteria, needs to be creative and those kind of things, and not just a method to get around things.
Right.
We want to make sure that we're not, it's not one giant variance, but they are, they are trying to meet, again, the goals and, and the objectives of PUD.
Which it seems that people use the PUD to get around all the subdivision regulations, quite honestly, very frequently. I'm not saying they are, that's why I asked the question.
Yes, sir.
I'm very happy to hear that they do meet.
Yes, sir.
The, it would be, if it was a subdivision, it would meet the, the green space requirements if you eliminate all the other uses.
I assume I'd like to speak on behalf of the developer.
Good evening, Nurseful Godwin, Sawgrass Consulting. Just to add a couple of items, especially to Councilman Burrell's questions regarding green space and common area. I know this has come up a couple of times before, just like Ms. Bryan said. For the sake of clarity though, I guess one thing to add to that is common area is more of a macro kind of term that is basically everything that is not a lot. So everything that is going to be held in common ownership by the homeowners association falls under that. So that's green space, that's, you know, other common areas, detention facilities, anything like that that is not a fee simple lot held by an individual is what is called common area. So on a plat, what, what sometimes creates a little confusion or question is that you can't physically plat green space, because that's a physical feature. And so that is not something that currently exists today. It will exist upon the completion of the subdivision, so that's not something we can define the limit of by way of like a meets and bounds description or, or something like that. So from a collective sense, everything that is not a lot is shown on a subdivision plat as a common area. So I understand there's a question, and sometimes it's a little vague, especially when all you have is the plat maybe is what you see in your report. So, but we do exceed the, the minimum requirement for green space. We did provide those calculations to staff and on the plat and so forth, so that we can show what is green space, and then actually what amount of the common area, which includes green space as well, but what portion of that goes to detention. So there's a number in there for detention, and there's a number in there for green space. And then combine the two together, and that makes your total common area. So we do separate those two out, just for the sake of hopefully being able to clarify some of that. As far as the PUD process, the only thing different in this development that would say be different than another subdivision per se is the fact that we've requested three different lot sizes there. That was what the PUD allows us to do. So we've got a 52-foot wide lot, I think the other's a 75-foot wide lot, and then the third are 100-foot wide lots. And so since we have all three of those zoning, or all three of those lot sizes, those would really fall under a couple of different zones and the zoning ordinance, so the PUD encompasses that for. So by doing that, we're able to get the three different lot sizes in the one subdivision without having multiple zoned areas and so forth. So that's what the PUD process for this particular development was. We still had to meet all the requirements for, for the subdivision regulations themselves. But anybody's got any other questions, I'm more than happy to try and answer.
I really appreciate that explanation. And pardon my grilling, but I think that that's part of our job, is to give a grilling, to make sure that we're fully vetting, you know, PUDs that sometimes I feel like get abused. But, but your answers to me are satisfactory, thank you.
Well, exactly one thing to mention is this is not a PUD, this is the subdivision we've already approved the PUD, so.
Do you, do you have the?
Council hasn't.
Do you have the subdivision, I mean, the landscape plat?
Doug Chaffin may have, Doug's our engineer of record.
The trees and the, because I think that that's really helpful for us as far as looking at what is
Sure.
Common area to what's useful and what's a retention pond and what's not. Because I thought that I saw something that was a really nice walking trail in that middle common area, but that could be.
Yeah, and what, since you mentioned, you're calculating all of this, so you have a, a number for the square footage of green space.
Yep, ma'am.
So that's what's missing, and what we get to see is that number has a boundary. In order to get the number, it has to have a location, and so clarifying where that is, where the stormwater, what percentage of, or graphically, what part of the common area is green, what part is wet. That's always helpful.
Right, I think the easy thing for that, which I mean, we turn in, but I honestly, I don't know what y'all get in your packet, but we turn in, you know, a full set of plans. So if you have a grading of drainage plan?
Not the plan.
I don't see it.
It says the 10 percent green space required in the common.
My point was, we see the numbers, but we don't see it graphically on a plan, so it doesn't give you this sense if, and I, the previous plan we saw with, that Holly was talking about, with the landscape plan, gave you a sense of a winding trail and landscape, so you got that public enjoyment.
And that was the PUD, and that was what we approved on the PUD.
Let me correct you, Mr. Chairman. You, you made a recommendation of approval of PUD.
It hasn't been approved yet, which is why I asked the question.
But I'm saying we here.
It's my recommendation.
What I'm trying to say here, Jack, is that, is that we did, did that already, and now we're looking at redoing the same process. I'm trying to remind people that we're on the subdivision process, not the PUD process.
Yeah.
I don't, I'm assuming it's not do the PUD twice. I mean, y'all can deny it if you want, but I'm saying I'd rather do the PUD once and then do the subdivision once rather than do the PUD twice and then the subdivision.
But if, if we can educate the council as much as possible with the PUD, that would be helpful. For instance, does the green space pass the litmus test? Does it pass the smell test? Because if it was, you know, a 10-foot strip that went all the way around the property, you know, and it added up to the proper acreage, that wouldn't be real usable. And I'm making up an absurd example, but you could do that.
Yeah, here you have 100 by about 800 foot of this total, you know, usable area, and then you have the buffers on the outside.
Well, and, and I don't mean to waste anybody's time, part of my comments are really just in general for all future projects, because this was tremendously helpful the first time, and so when we can see that, it helps. I did have one specific question though for you, that on the, on the landscape plan with what Holly was talking about, that, that common walking trail.
Right.
On the, the eastern side of it, on the, on the topo.
South side.
Oh, south, okay, north isn't up. Yeah, oh, north, never mind. North is always up in my head. It appears that there's a, a wet pond or a dry pond, and, and but on the landscape, it shows it as a walking path. Can you clarify what's in this area?
Yeah, so what the one you have, I'll be honest, that rendering you had, have now was for the PUD. There's been some slight modifications after we've worked through a lot of this stuff with staff, so that was not the most current. We, we tried to get a new one, we just couldn't get one fast enough from our consultant to have for the meeting tonight. So that's why, but the, the, any sidewalk variation or whatnot, you know, obviously we're not going to run that through the middle of a drainage structure or something like that, so.
Yeah, that's, we saw this, we assumed that wasn't a drainage ditch because of the path.
Correct, it's, it's not, it won't be a drainage ditch, no ma'am.
So where, where are the grassy swales in this?
I'm gonna let Doug Chaffin, he's our engineer of record, he can sort of point those out more.
Well, you have to excuse me a little bit, Doug Chaffin with Sawgrass. A little hard to just point from here, but we've got them along the boundary. We, we had some space that separated the trees from the lots that we used a grass swale along the east side of the, the property. We utilized that large area that's in the central portion of the property, and, and part of that too, part of our thinking was, that was, that was an area that we could utilize, but still remained large and flat where people could access it, people could play in it, kids could get in there and play wiffle ball soccer and still do all that. We could still utilize it for a very wide, shallow stormwater treatment area that doesn't pond in it per se, it just will run through at a depth and, and be gone after the rain event's gone. We use a swell along the area to the south that, that, that kind of picks up the stormwater from the, the lots that abut Twin Beach Road. So those were the three locations that we did the, the swales in.
Okay, thank you.
Since, you know, typically in our package, we put the site plan, we don't, we don't put a lot of information in your package, most of the people think. We can, if you want more, we can set up like a Dropbox and make it available electronically for those of you who want to go into a deep dive into all the documents we have that we haven't filed, it's probably, you know, thick as a stick.
That's a green space. I don't know if it's a green space or not.
But if the plan you want, we could look for someone to, to make that available electronically to do and see if you have access to that Dropbox location or something like that.
That would be great.
Mr. Chairman, I had one more staff comment before we moved on, and that is that, as you noticed and you'll see on the next couple of cases as well, is that we've, at the staff level, we've gone, gone and made a great effort to illuminate for you and show you inset drawings of the LID techniques. And I think that what we're hearing tonight and what we'll do as staff is do the same, make the same effort for the green space, give you, give you those, give you those zoomed in drawings, and display that for you during the meeting where we can put it on the screen. But like Wayne was saying, if we have that, if, every engineer gives us digital copies of all their plans. So if we put that in a file-sharing service where you'd have the entire set as Adobe documents you can very easily download, you
Documents you can very easily download, you can zoom in on the most minute detail. So, that is something, that's something we'll definitely do for future purposes, is for the green spaces, illuminate that just like we're illuminating LID techniques tonight.
That'd be great. I mean, like this right here is very helpful. So, any kind of graphic like this victorally will show us, you know, what you have in mind, as long as there's not fine print that might say, you know, proposed and not, you know, or might be, we might do this.
Is that what's proposed?
Yes, that green space is the same, it's in the same area as we presented in the PUD. You know, sidewalks, obviously, what happens out there is, you know, when somebody builds a sidewalk, is it going to be exactly in that same spot? It may not be as, you know, they maneuver through there. So, I mean, that's why we don't calculate like the total linear footage of sidewalks and so forth. There will be walkways through it that'll meander through there as close as they can get it, but they may run into, I don't know, a tree stump or something that they don't move either way, but, or they may define a specific area, but they will move the sidewalks and meander them through for access points and so forth. So, yes, that is the intent for that area.
Or even like a pervious trail like they've done in other neighborhoods that would work, again, we're not commingling the green space and the drainage space together, but that might work well.
Well, they are, they are, but it's not a deep, you know...
Correct, right, so the water sheets through there, and it's, correct, and it's going to perk in, and something's going to carry down and so forth, but that's some of the more natural feature of the property than it is, per se, a man-made kind of thing. So, we're trying to utilize what the property provides us for drainage, and then at the same time be able to utilize that for all the residents there for green space as well. So, without going in and altering it, it provides both.
Well, let me ask you a question about the graphic that's on the screen. It's very hard to read this, and it's not in our package. If you look at the central common area, that's the center, the long strip of, and then inside, in the piece of paper that was just handed out, it was, you know, a nice green space with some sidewalks. As you look at the screen to the very far right of that, you know, what is that, what's being called out? There's a circular area, I mean, is that...
It's a dry, it's a dry pond area, so basically, the water eventually travels down that way and heads out. And so, it really is more of a treatment kind of facility than it is...
Is that part of the LID right there? Okay, but it still meets, and then the little area encompassed by the two black lines just to the left of that dry pond, what is that area?
It's like a...
This is right.
It cuts across that same green space, or same common area.
Those are just divisions of how we separated out each of the BMP areas that drain to that specific location. So, we put lines to paper that delineated those areas. In actuality, that pond at the end is large enough to accept almost the entire subdivision's water for water treatment in this case, but we've run it through, you know, six, seven other instruments before we get to that. So, we've provided above and beyond in that case as far as TSS removal.
Well, when I see that, when I look at this graphic and I see retention in the top right of the picture, and then I go to the center part of the common area, then it looks like something's taken up the dry pond to the right, and then I saw some other lines, it looks like it's eaten. Pretty soon, you're down to just a little bit of common area in the middle. That's why the question's too...
Right, so I think the easiest way to explain that is just, is sort of, because we actually sat down with staff and sort of walked through this whole green space calculation and the LIDs and requirements and so forth, you know, implied the definitions of what was applicable to green space and what's not. And the fact that none of those things are really holding water to stay there, like the wet pond is, for instance, none of those, none of those features do that. They're all just a treatment type of facility that helps clean the water, you know, as Buford showed, you know, the TSS is 80% for each one. So, it just, each time it goes through the next step, it just cleans the water that little bit more and a little bit more and a little bit, so that by the time it ultimately winds up at the wet pond where it will stay and then ultimately be released, you know, it's super clean water, basically, is what it boils down to. So, it's not a, it's not a process that the water is going to stand there the same way it's sitting in that pond. But again, it's sort of using that natural feature of the land as it's naturally contoured, so, because the water's going to convey that way anyway. And so, short of you going in there and just digging ditches all over the place and running pipes all over the place and stuff like that, then, you know, you let it run as it does, and since we've got such a large area in there, you let it free-flow through there or sheet-flow as it naturally would. So, there's not a, we're not holding it, per se, as in like a detention pond.
Mr. Chairman, I make one more comment. I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but I do want to make mention that we've got a lot of design requirements for green space, but we only require 10%, which is not a tremendous amount of property. And just for example, on this one, one of the very specific requirements for green space is that it must be located at the rear edge or interior of the development, and this development has a green space that goes around the whole development. And so, if you look at that, we only require 10%. So, you start, you know, the requirement gets met fairly easily, and then the other areas that are quote unused are again in retention most of the time. So, if I'm telling you, we've had a lot of design requirements and only a little bit of space to design, so many times that, you know, 10% is really not a lot. I mean, we've talked about a PUD, it's 40 or 80 acres and things like that, but there's limits to what you can do with that, I guess, as far as anything that's created, especially when we say it must be located in the interior or to the rear of the property. This one has a, there's a pretty significant tree line, I believe, to the west of it, and all that is in green space. And so, that's kind of the first priority, suppose over trees, and there's a big lot of oaks, and so that was put in green space, which we had our suggestion, that we want to make sure that stays undisturbed and remains rather than being a lot and potentially be cut down because it's going to become a cemetery. So, there's, you know, we may want to look at maybe in the future, is 10% enough? And, or maybe there's certain areas we want more green space or less, but just want to make mention that 10% is the required amount that they have to show.
All right, thank you very much. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Does anybody from the public wish to speak to the Twin Beach Estates? Yes, sir, if you'll come up and just state your name and your address for the, for Emily, please, and...
I'm David Ellis, it's 7194 Broadbeck Lane. And this really doesn't just concern their development, it's just the other, the addition of all the other ones that are in this, our area, with the 200-plus homes that are going behind us on Old Battles Estates there, you know, the 94 apartments that I see down here coming in. Where's it all going? Where's the sewer going? I haven't heard that yet. You know, are we, do we have more lift stations now, or what's been going on?
There will be added lift stations for the development.
And when is that?
I'm sorry?
When will that be?
That's when they build the units that they're building.
Okay, and that'll take care of apartments and all that that we have down that way?
Yes.
We're talking about...
Yeah, that's a different location.
We're talking about Twin Beach Road, they will build a pump station for their development.
For theirs, okay.
We're talking about, primarily, right now, we're talking about, we're talking about Twin Beach Estates. If you have, you know, if you've got macro issues, need to go to the city council, we need to change the subdivision rates...
Yeah, right, that's what I'm saying. There's huge things that y'all are going to have to be addressing to get this, get not only this one done, but the other, the other ones that are on the agenda. And as far as the traffic on Twin Beach Road, when we have all these houses built and the estates and the apartments added to it, where they, they're all going to Walmart, Twin Beach Road, I mean, it's going to be massive there. So, there's just going to have to be a lot of things done by the city to accommodate these guys, the other people, and what we already have that's been approved. So, and the only other thing is, we notice that every time a subdivision wants to come in, they want to be annexed. Why is that?
You'd have to ask the individual developers.
Because of the sewer connection.
Typically, there's a lower town fee.
Right, and that's our big problem, our sewer stuff. But now they get in, they get it all approved, then they come into Fairhope and they don't have to pay it. Why don't y'all wait to annex them until after it's built, and then you can charge them more money to hook in and build a new sewer plant, you know? But right now, we're just kind of like, it's like, everything is getting stacked on top of us, one after the other, and we just don't know when it's going to end until the land's gone.
Well, I know we started, you know, five projects of what I would call a phase one of a sewer improvement program, and we're looking at some master planning that goes in front of those projects to extend further out, like you're talking about Twin Beach Road or...
Down our way, because, I mean, of all the stormwater stuff, we've been hearing a lot, and it's because of that other development that we already approved earlier that washed out the roads. So, anyway, that's all I had to ask, as much as...
Well, people are coming, unless we confiscate land or buy land and turn it into parks.
Well, that's what we're worried about, because we got the only spot left out there.
But the good news is that there are 55 counties in the state of Alabama that's population is shrinking, and all of us, if we get two foot up, can move to one of those counties, and sometimes I think about it, so...
Yeah, I was just trying to add to, a lot of these areas that are on the perimeter of the city...
A lot of these areas on the perimeter of the city, you know, you have a joint jurisdiction with the county as well, so some of these roads are county roads, and so we don't control the roads and those kind of things. I will say that when people annex in and then they develop, they pay impact fees to us. If they, if they developed and then annexed in, the city will not get any impact fees, and that goes to help pay for police and fire and all those things that are necessary to protect the citizens.
So, the city makes more money if they annex?
I don't think it's an issue of making money, yes.
Well, not only that, the property taxes are huge. If you, if you deny, if you just let them stay within the county, you're not going to get that tax revenue, and that's the catch-22 you run in. They're going to build on your border, whether you want them to or not, so you might as well collect the property taxes. It was kind of like when Walmart was just across the street from the city limits, well, we weren't collecting the sales taxes, the property taxes for that land, and well, that was a totally different scenario. Now, through an act of the state legislature, we are.
But also, it's unzoned as well, so there's no zoning out there as well, so it's unzoned in the county, they could build whatever they wanted to.
That's what we're getting our pick for, I'm ready to go.
Yeah, I've heard that many times during my career.
Thank you, Richard, for that.
Well, you know, and we're working hard to keep up with it, and I admit that there's some, a lot of development that is knocking on our door, and, you know, we're doing the best we can to keep up with that, too. And the benefit to having gravity sewers and lift stations in these new places, we can turn them off when it rains, and we can let them back up until we get past the problems that we have with the rehabilitation work we're doing, but we're working on all of that.
And I'll say this, until the population hits 20,000, you can do a forced annexation...
25,000.
Is it 45?
25.
25,000, excuse me. And with the private property rights, you know, in the state of Alabama, it's pretty tough to, you know, really enforce a lot out of the city limits, other than just your subdivision regulations, which we, which we look at and we tweak. But once you have your subdivision regulations, you pretty much have to go by that, or the Alabama state law calls it takings otherwise.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you for your question.
Mr. Chairman, I make one quick comment, it's my last one, I promise. You know, we hear a lot about growth and how we dealing with the growth, those kind of things, and it's a, it's a difficult issue, because as Mr. Burrell said, you know, we have limited authority out there, and some of these areas, they can develop whether we like it or not, and we deal with it, whether they come in or not. I do want to make sure that everybody knows that, you know, we are, and Fairhope's always done a good job, we are implementing some new growth plans, some new comprehensive plans in the future. I believe we've asked for some funds from the BP, or store money for that. That's going to be sort of a new way of planning. We're going to be coordinating with our utilities and trying to locate utilities in places where we expect growth to occur and where we predict growth to occur, and so I think that's, as we go forward, the next 20 to 30 years, I think that's going to be a big benefit for us. But we are doing our very best. We've had a lot of limitations, it's, you know, when you have no zoning around you, it does make it difficult, because there's no incentive really to, you know, to come in in many cases, and then you do have development that you don't control and can't be, you know, can't be managed. Now, there are places in the county that there is zoning outside of borders of cities, unfortunately, in Fairhope, it only occurs in Point Clear and Montrose, which is pretty much almost developed out, really, means this is built out. And so, that is a challenge for us, but I believe that over the next year or two, you'll see some things coming up that I think would be very helpful. We're going to try to do a visual preference survey, which is, I think, is a new, a new method. We hear a lot about what people don't like. The visual preference survey is a chance for people to show us what they do like, so we can sort of pattern the development after, after what is desirable by the, by the people and do it that way. But I want to make sure that people understand, we are working very hard. I can assure you that these developments get reviewed very carefully, very thoroughly. We meet as a group to review these with not only planning staff, but with utilities and public works and the horticulturists and all those, and so they are getting a very thorough review. It is, it is a challenge, because we are growing, but as you said, I mean, there's some places that don't have that problem, and so, you know, I guess in some sense, it's we're fortunate, but it does bring its challenges to accommodate that.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak to this item? If not, I will close the public hearing at this time and turn the meeting over to the commissioners. I see Mr. Byrne and Booth are here, they're the developers of the project, as well as the engineers, if you have any questions, ask them now, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, before we set a motion, I just want to continue the discussion about how we're trying to get better, and then when you look at connectivity, you know, right now, we've got a road that abuts the next property, and somehow, I'd like to start working, and I talked with Wayne and Buford a little bit about this last week, is to create a definition where connectivity includes utilities, too, because in this case, gravity sewer's on the downhill side of the subdivision, and we'd like the connectivity to allow that to continue, you know, without having to have a gap between two lots, where, I mean, you've got two fences that are going to be within some reasonable distance of setback, and it's, to be able to maintain these things in a, in a right of way or in an easement that works best for the utilities, I think we need to work a little bit on our definition. You may have other ideas or whatever, but we, I think that's something that we'd like to get started on pretty quick.
Sounds good.
Very quickly, I just wanted to say that I appreciate the fact that if I heard correctly, you know, we have a requirement to treat 85% of the water, but all the water going through this, this development will be treated with the LID techniques, and I think that's commendable, and I hope we see more of it.
I make a motion that we approve 1824 with staff's recommendations.
Do you have a second? Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I had one other question, and I apologize, I couldn't get the package opened earlier today to study this a little more, but I do see that there's a package that says that AT&amp;T will serve this subdivision, maybe that's a question for the engineers. And so, you know, one of the complaints that I get a lot as a city council member is that there are portions of town, nobody's fault, that are underserved. You know, people are worried about their internet service and whatnot, so when I see AT&amp;T, that could be, I mean, that could be basic phone service. I mean, are, is the developer planning on providing fiber optics, or what kind of utilities other than water, sewer, gas, and electric are being provided for these residents?
You know, I'm going to have to answer that with an "I don't know," and I'll tell you why. I mean, there's, so, you know, a lot of municipalities, we're seeing now, there's sort of a collective answer for telecom-related utilities. A lot of municipalities now have actually dropped the telecom-related utility specifically for a lot of what you're saying, and, you know, what we tend to run across more often than not with, whether it's AT&amp;T or MediaCom or, you know, any cable slash telephone slash internet provider, is they're all pretty non-committal about, you know, what services they have available where and how fast they'll get those to you and so forth and so on, and when we submit letters of availability to those guys, you know, we send them a copy of a plat or layout, you know, typically, the best we get is, you know, yes, we are willing and able to serve you, and you tend to not get a ton of response back in terms of, we can, you know, put 120-count fiber out there that provides, you know, upload and download speeds of so many megabytes per second, or whatever the case may be, that tends to not be a readily available thing. Some of that is, and I speak from experience, because we actually have a... Some of that is, and I speak from experience, because we actually have a branch of our company that does telecom work. Um, those things tend to take a lot of time and a lot of effort through a municipality in terms of franchise agreements and how fast they're building and, you know, what they're getting approved to do. And then sort of what's in their short-term and long-term plan. So, you know, for them to tell us, you know, we can provide you fiber to the home immediately upon, they, they just tend to not provide that information.
But do you, as a developer, though, do you provide the connections for whomever that might, that may, or may not be able to provide it in the future? What are you doing to, to provide the connections to each individual lot owner in there?
Right, so in terms of that, that would be the same as providing a water meter or, or providing your power meter or anything. You know, they get a service to the street. So, what typically happens in construction is there's a conduit that's typically placed in the ground along with the electrical conduit. Um, any type of utility beyond water and sewer tends to be installed by the service provider themselves. So, there's a conduit put in the ground. And then, say, Bolin AMC, Riviera, whoever it may be, they come and install their own electrical lines or their own telephone lines and cable or whatever the case may be. So, in this instance, what happens there is, you know, Unity Fiber, say, for instance, they're not, they don't provide services to the home. But it, you know, if they came in first and they have a franchise agreement with the city of Fairhope, they may wind up in that duct before AT&amp;T does. Um, it just happens to be that AT&amp;T is the local residential provider. Um, so, when they get there is when they get there. Um, they, but they have the route to get there. Um, you know, what we can't do is we can't make them build down Twin Beach, you know, faster than, you know, they, they have on their plan. They may not have the capacity or they may have it and just have not put that on a plan to build it yet. Um, all those things obviously get worked with, you know, we work with them through that period of time. But they may get there by the time the subdivision's finished out or they may not. Um, you know, some municipalities, you can see where you go in neighborhoods and they got the cable laying on the ground. And it'll be there for a while until the crew actually comes in to, to bury it. So, it's hard for a developer or even a consultant to tie down somebody like AT&amp;T on when that's gonna happen.
Yeah, I was just more concerned with the infrastructure that has developers building the, the sewer, stormwater sewer, and streets, sidewalks, and everything else. This, you know, planning commission oughta look to also, do we even consider, you know, other utility requirements? And I know you can't control whether Unity or AT&amp;T or MediaCom or anybody else is gonna come to that subdivision. And I think it has to be probably profitable for them. But it also, you know, as a, a entity, do developers need to provide at least, once you get to the subdivision, the wherewithal to get to the lot owner?
Right, so, and it's typical for that duct, for that telecom-related duct to go in the ground along with the power duct. So, that's about as much as you could tie down a developer in terms of doing that because it's just, it's more of a specialized type of construction, say, to go in and install fiber or something.
Mr. Chairman, we have talked internally of potentially looking at requiring, uh, a conduit. So, when you do go in and wanna put fiber in there, you don't have to dig the whole neighborhood up like we have many times. That's something we've talked about. That's something the planning commission wants us to explore. We certainly can do that further. Uh, I think conduit would be a, a natural way to sorta increase the efficiency of someone to put it in there and maybe encourage them to put it in there if it's gonna be easier.
Erso, is it, before you get off, is it, is there any way for the telephone or communication systems to qualify or quantify what their capabilities are at that location? To, just so somebody knows, whether that be the consultant or the developer or the planning commission trying to look at these things?
Yeah, I would tend to wanna answer that with good luck. I mean, I just, you know, because it's all a little bit different in terms of what you're asking for to, to quantify. I mean, it's, you know, of course, everybody loves to have, you know, super-fast upload and download and, you know, stream television. And, you know, the kids are on a bunch of tablets or what, you know, their ability to quantify a specific need, you know, it's difficult to do.
But their network is like any other network. They have more capability near the head end than they have five miles away from it.
Correct, and so, if they have a fiber line in the ground, that's one thing. If they're running, you know, off of copper for a certain distance and then ultimately jump onto fiber, that's another thing. You know, and then, obviously, I don't wanna get into how they market their service per se. But, I mean, I, I don't know if we would ever be able to get somebody to do that. And then, two, in certain areas where maybe AT&amp;T's the only provider, you know, they may not provide you that because it really doesn't matter. If you want it, that's what you're gonna get.
Yeah, I'm, just showed Richard that line that says, there's a letter from AT&amp;T that says, "We'll serve," but that's kind of a, a broad statement. "We'll, we'll serve," how?
Right.
Well, we did approve them on Thompson Hall Road about, uh, not, less than a year ago. So, I mean, I know it's, it's coming close.
Right, I mean, I think everybody, all you, all of the providers are making some sort of effort to try to build out areas as they grow and expand. I mean, all, you know, obviously, I mean, it's a huge benefit for them to be able to pump internet in somebody's house at unlimited speed. I mean, you know, you're just gonna up your subscription rate until you get it like you want it. But, you know, it's just hard for us as a consultant or, or even a developer to, to know exactly what that'll be and when that is.
Yeah, and there's a lot of people going wireless. I mean, that's just the way it is, so it's
Correct.
difficult to capture, you know, a full subdivision and pay back the cost of investment to put it in if you don't know.
Exactly, yeah, I mean, everybody needs water, everybody needs sewer, everybody needs power, but everybody doesn't need telephone. And so, it is, it's hard for them to quantify that.
Thank you, Ursula.
Yep.
Any further? If not, all in favor to approve subject to staff recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a nay? If the motion passes unanimously. Uh, the next item on the agenda is Red Barn Road Estates, replat of lots four, five, six, seven, and eight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This subdivision is, um, Red Barn Road, and it's a nine-lot subdivision. However, the original approved Red Barn Road subdivision consisted of sixteen lots. And what the applicant is doing is taking a portion of those lots, reconfiguring five, um, of the original sixteen lots and then, but only adding an actual four-lot increase from what was originally approved. So, we are processing this as a minor subdivision. There are no road improvements, no in, infrastructure being proposed. And, um, the original preliminary plat was approved for the sixteen lot in December of two thousand and sixteen. And the final plat was in April two thousand and seventeen. This particular subdivision is, um, within the planning jurisdiction and the permit jurisdictions. It's, there's one flag lot on there, and we've asked them to check with Bolin County to verify that that flag lot is acceptable through the county. And, um, we've asked for some corrections for the utility easements and building setback lines so that the utility easements are not greater than the building setback line and that they meet the city of Fairhope requirements. Um, we, uh, Richard Johnson requested a note be added regarding drainage. This particular site has LID on the individual lots that are gonna be built at the time of home construction. So, we have certain notes on there to, um, that Eric and Richard Johnson and even on the first one, um, Jonathan Smith all worked on those notes at one time or another to get satisfactory notes regarding the LID on the, um, property. Let's see, um, in this case, Mr. Johnson had suggested adding a note on the plat that sidewalks be required at the time of building permit since it's a minor subdivision and it's, um, in our permit jurisdiction, so we will have, um, authority over the permitting. I met with Eric Cortinez, and he confirmed that that would be acceptable. So, there will be no bond on the performance bond for the sidewalks. Let's see, what else? Uh, I think that covers it. The maintenance bond for this particular subdivision is already in place from the original sixteen lots. So, and I think that covers everything. Oh, uh, I talked to Richard Johnson and Mr. Peterson regarding street trees. And with a minor subdivision, um, we're not gonna require street trees because no streets are being placed, um, in the subdivision. So, thank you.
Well, whoa, 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 whoa. I have several questions, please.
Sure.
What's flag lot?
Flag lot is a, a lot that's in, a lot that is in a flag shape, basically. And the county used to have certain dimensions on those lots, but now, I think, I talked to Wayne, there was some, it was under discussion regards to those.
Okay, how many, initially with Red Barn Road Estates, did you say the initially there were sixteen lots? So, it was treated as a major subdivision then?
Yes, in its original form, yes.
All right, and so, what they're doing now is taking, what is it, four of these?
Well, they're not totally subdividing all four of those because the lot numbers don't work out. There, I believe there were three. They just readjusted the widths so they would actually get four lots in there, four additional lots.
Okay.
Out of that nine lots.
There were four going across the top that they re-subdivided into seven.
So, they added four more lots, so now the sub, Red Barn Estates is now twenty lots?
Twenty-two.
Yes.
Was it sixteen originally?
Sixteen originally. They're adding four.
Eighty-twenty now.
Yes.
I think what, what Art's getting at, which is what gives me heartburn, I don't necessarily have a problem with the subdivision per se, maybe. But I, I, I think I know exactly where he's going, is we're going from sixteen to twenty. And then, next month, are they gonna come for a replat of one through three?
I had those.
And get up to twenty-four? And then a replat of, you know, nine through thirteen?
That's exactly, yeah.
And then we're at twenty-eight, number to thirty-two. And then, hey, why don't we go back to number one and divide that into two, three-acre ones? And, you know, all of a sudden, these ten-acre lots, you know, we have a fifty-lot subdivision going under minors. And that's, you know, that's what gives me a little bit of heartburn.
That's, that's, that's the issue. Because i- i- in, in the county, it, once upon a time, Wayne, we, if we had someone that came that wanted a, uh, a minor subdivision, then the question always had to do with what is the balance of the property going to be utilized for? And if it, and if they said, "We're gonna divide it in the future," then we didn't treat it as a minor subdivision. And this is, this gives me great angst because I could bring a, uh, forty-acre piece of property in here and say, "I wanna divide it into four ten-acre lots." And now they use a minor subdivision. And then, next year I come, or next month I come in here and I say, "Well, I wanna take this ten, this, uh, this ten and I wanna make four two-and-a-half-acre lots." And the next month, I'm gonna come and, and you're circumventing the process.
Okay.
So, I, I don't.
If I could clarify, I mean, we have a, um, major subdivision that was approved and recorded, so we've got lots of record. Uh, the lots that they want to subdivide have, there's no road requirements. They're not installing roads, not installing utilities, not installing anything. Um, and if you read our regulations, it qualifies for a minor, and that's something that's been talked about.
I don't know if I agree with that, because we got nine lots, not four.
Why, why does?
No, the, the, the only, there's only four new lots.
Well, but you're changing the nature vote with approved.
Other lots that were changed.
There's nothing in our sub记that says if it's a major and you're doing two, it's gonna be a major change. I mean, that, that's not, I mean, I'm sorry, that's just not part of our regulations when we read that. I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, but if you read our regulations, word for word, it describes a minor subdivision. There's no infrastructure, there's no drainage, and these, there's, in these four lots, there's, there's none of that.
Is there no process?
Isn't it nine lots, though?
Pardon me?
But it's, it's nine lots.
No, we have a lot line adjustment and then four new lots.
Define major and minor, then.
Uh, the major, the criteria is in the ordinance, but basically.
How many lots?
Under lots of, under numbered lots.
How many lots, or what's the number?
Four, minor is four.
Lots total.
Minor's four?
Four or less.
So, we're considering nine lots?
Yeah.
These are not.
No, these are, there's only four new lots.
They're not nine new lots, no.
Wayne, is there a process to revise?
Call it four new, which is nine total.
I mean, it seems more appropriate to me if there was a process to say, "You approved a major subdivision, we're changing it. Reconsider the major subdivision. Here's the amended major subdivision," and look at it that way with all the, you know, it changes the way that it was approached.
Okay, it, it.
We can do that, but you realize we have.
It begs the question for what we had especially a call meeting a couple of weeks ago.
I'd like, I'd like to hear from our attorney on that.
All right, just a, just a second. And then, and then it had to do, if, if it, that, if that's the way the regulations read, then if we don't agree with them, then we need to change the regulations. I mean, is that simple? But go ahead, Ken.
I respect the staff's view on this, but this is a piece of land. Although it was approved as part of approved subdivision before, they're taking a piece of land, reconfiguring that land into nine lots. In my view, it does not qualify as a minor subdivision.
Make sure, there, there, we make sure to understand, there are, there is, we've got a lot line adjustment, which is allowed no matter what. And then there are four new lots. So, I mean, we could have a major subdivision that was approved twenty years ago that has a five-acre lot. And you're saying that if they wanna split that lot, that's gotta be a major subdivision because it was part of a major subdivision twenty years ago?
No, if they have, if they had a subdivision twenty years ago that has five lots, then they're making it into nine, you would.
The regulation doesn't have reference to how many additional lots there are. It has reference to how many lots there are on a given plot of land. And they're taking these, I don't know what that acreage is, but wanna put nine lots on them. I just don't think that qualifies as a minor subdivision.
Nancy, is, are there nine new lots or how, how many new lots?
There's a total of nine lots.
How many new lots?
Four lots.
Four lots.
Okay, are those the original five lots exactly the same as they were before or have they changed?
They readjusted the lot lines. So, they're new.
So, they've all changed, so they're new lots, to me.
But they're not the same shape and size as they were.
A, a new lot is a, I mean, a lot line adjustment does not, is, that's just moving a lot line. We've not created any new lots with lot line adjustment.
But you have.
We're, we're, we're not creating a new lot. We're just saying we're gonna move this line, five feet or ten feet, whatever it is. When we had a new lot is you, you are creating a new lot that was not originally there.
There are only four new lots created.
There's only four new lots there. Make sure we understand that.
If there aren't any infrastructure improvements, why, how would you look at it any differently than you are as a minor subdivision?
Well, in a minor subdivision, that's part of the criteria. There's no infrastructure requirement.
I know, and that's what I'm saying, I mean.
If there was a road to be placed here because of these four lots, that, because you're installing infrastructure, that is automatically characterizes that as a major development. But a minor is four or fewer, with not, without any infrastructure requirements.
But what if, what if it's a family?
We have a lot of record. We, when these were plotted, they're plotted, that, that then becomes a lot of record. Those lots are now legal lots. So, all they did is took those legal lots, adjusted the lot line on a few of those, didn't create new lots, but did divide some of those lots that were part of the major, part of the major subdivision that was recorded lots of record and made additional lots that did not go above and beyond the, the, the minor requirements because they're few, four or fewer, and there's no, no infrastructure, no utilities, no nothing.
Why, why is four a magic number for a minor subdivision?
That, yeah, that's a, that's a, sure, the, of the regulations.
Per the regulation.
And I know that, but somebody had to put it in there for a reason. Is there a magic number that somebody decided that was? Okay, but if there, if there are no, if there's no roadway to build, if there's no water, no sewer, no anything else to install. I mean, what would you, how would you view it with a, with a preliminary, what would the preliminary plat do?
Water retention, density?
No, I mean, I think they would be exempt from all that, wouldn't they?
I mean, the smallest lot's two point something acres if I see this right.
Yes, it's, the, what's the small, what were the lot sizes on the four new lots, Nancy?
Um, just a moment, I will tell you.
And I think when it gets down to a point where somebody continues to do minor subdivision after minor subdivision, eventually you're gonna run out of road frontage and eventually you're gonna have to build something behind it.
Well, that, they are.
And that's when you start.
I mean, actually, that, that, I didn't mean to interrupt you, I'm sorry, finish. I had a different comment. All the subdivision, parsing aside, the, when we looked at it, the, the only two things that, that bother me about it are the flag lot because it, it doesn't even look like, it looks like a bounded lot. I don't see the, the flag part on, on this plat. And then the, the, the way that, you know.
There's your flag. There's your access.
Oh, but it doesn't look like it's actually part of the lot.
That's right.
If this is the lot line.
I'm assuming the piece, the, the, the property down to the, to the, on the southern portion of that subdivision is right below, above lot three is access to the flag lot?
Yes, well, it was.
I believe so. Let me make, the, the smallest lot out here that we're talking about, these four lots, is two point six acres. The largest lot is five point seven acres. We're not talking about fifty-foot lots.
Yeah.
Um, so, I think because of that, even if you did a major subdivision, I, I think it's gonna be exempt from the drainage requirements and anything else. I mean, there's really no, I, I was alluding to what Richard is saying, I'm not sure what would be different if, if we did do it as a major.
As, as far as likewise property around us, what are those lot sizes?
I, I don't know. I, I don't know, it's, it's.
Across the road, everywhere.
It's unzoned property in the county, and so that's really, I mean, as far as our consideration, that's not something we consider because it's unzoned.
And, kind of let me be the devil's advocate, you know, just, the, the, the problem that this staff encountered is we wanted to make sure we lived up to the requirements of the original major subdivision. So we kept all applicable rules that were applied by a planning commission to this, to these new net lots. Meaning there's four more lots than there were when they originally made the application. So we kept all that same, and then we added a little bit more, such as the sidewalk requirement, which was not part of the original approval. So at least we've captured these nine lots under this because they're all under consideration. But let's say we treated it as a major subdivision, what would be different? It would mean tonight you could approve a preliminary, and then on the next agenda item, you could approve the final. That's the only thing would be different if we, if we treated it as, because there is nothing for us to inspect, there is no improvements to be made because everything is there to support those lots. So really, the only difference between treating this as a major versus a minor, or minor versus a major, is that you would have two agenda items as opposed to one. Because a minor is a fin, a preliminary and final all at the same time, which this applies for. Because there is no sewer to be installed and expected, no water, no roads to be built. And again, because the original approval included the stormwater management at the time of construction, we kept that requirement the same to be consistent. I don't like it, but the die was cast back in two thousand and sixteen. So really, in this sense, the only thing that would change if we had said it was a major, is that there'd be two agenda items for the, for the preliminary approval and then the final approval. In this case, we look at it as a minor, and it's a preliminary and final at the same time.
And the water line, and then in the original sixteen lots, so, and I, I checked it further to make sure that it verified that it would accommodate what was needed.
Mr. Johnson, and, and you know, when I look at this subdivision as it is and where it is, I don't have, I really don't have a bit of problem with the lot size. I, I think it's in keeping with the area, I have no issues with that. But to, to not define it as a major subdivision is going down a slippery slope. And, you know, I think that we should, maybe, if we need to further define, you know, whether you can take a major subdivision and keep adjusting lot lines and say that it, it didn't change. I mean, to me, these are new lots, no matter how you cut it, and if our attorney says it's a major subdivision, I look at that as, that's a nine-lot subdivision, which is a major subdivision. And if we have to approve it as a major subdivision, I think we should do the right thing because we're gonna get a slip, on a slippery slope, was to keep, maybe not these people, but the next people who are saying, I'm gonna adjust my lot lines, and then I'm gonna adjust them again, I'm gonna adjust them again. And then I'm gonna get them down to as small as I can, but stay within the original acceptance, and, and our density is gonna be out of control.
Yeah, and the only thing I want to reinforce to you, whether we call it a minor tonight or a major, the requirements we've held them to meets the requirements of the original major subdivision. And we added at least to these nine lots, the sidewalk requirement. So, I mean, so I feel like we, we did our best to make.
So the water retention with the lots being smaller has been?
They're two point six acres, the smallest lot.
Yep, and, and the original approval was that LID and the, versus, uh, for, for the stormwater management were to be on each a lot-by-lot basis at time of home construction. We kept that requirement on the, uh, the additional lots that are being created. Meaning, I don't like that, because I'm of the opinion that that should be in place before home construction begins.
I, I, I agree with that, too, but, but I think when you have ten-acre lots, which we had, or, you know, five-plus acre, you know, lots, you're more liable to make an exception than if they then, we make that exception when they come in with five and ten-acre lots. And then they come back this time, and this time, and this time, with two-and-a-half acre lots, and we're still giving them that exception, that they're doing it at the time of, of building rather than, you know, as you would prefer. I mean, I, I love to give some dispensations to people that come in with the subdivisions out in this area with large lots. I mean, we had one come out here one time with a hundred and twenty lots on the same piece of property, plus their mind is, I don't know, it's a hundred lots, maybe two hundred. But, um, but just my concern is, is that then the lots get chopped down and dispensations that we gave them in the past are maybe not applicable in the future. You know, again, I don't have a problem with this per se, um, as I've looked at it thus far, it's just more the, you know, the precedent that it sets. And I mean, Lord, if this is the way we're going, I mean, my family's got a thousand feet on scenic highway ninety-eight that this might suit us great for, you know? Uh, you know, same thing selfishly, I, I, I like it, but I just don't, you know, it just gives me a little bit of heartburn.
Can they take?
I'm sorry.
Could they take two lots, just use this as an example, could they take two of these lots and say, I'm gonna adjust these lines, and I'm gonna make those four lots now, and it's a minor subdivision?
You can't adjust lines and, and net new lots, meaning that, meaning you could make one bigger and one smaller if you move a line. But in this case, just so you know, that, that, that one, there were some, there was some line movement that is one of the functions, that didn't net any new lots. And then after they moved those lines, they took four lots and divided them in, basically in half for easy math to net the four additional.
Can I take two of these lots and make them four lots?
I mean, before you answer that question, is, is there a minimum lot size to be able to have a minor subdivision on?
Oh, there's a minimum lot size, not for minor subdivision, no, I'm not, I'm not.
No, I'm saying, if you got a, if you got a two-acre piece of property, is that too small to make a minor subdivision out of it?
No.
If you have a one-acre piece of property, is that too, so there's never a property too small to make a minor subdivision?
We've got a lot width and a minimum lot size is fifteen thousand square feet.
Okay.
And a hundred-foot lot width, that, that is the requirement, whether you're in town or whether you're.
The dimensional requirement for the lot would be what tells you how many lots they can cut out of it. And, and just to answer your question, of all the lots now that front on Red Barn, they even, every one of them up to a hundred and eighty-three and some change in width. So no, they could not come back with any of those lots and do a subdivision because in the county, it has to be a hundred-foot minimum road frontage. So this would, this would be it. Now, could they come in and request to move lines and shrink all of those to a hundred-foot wide? And then take that remainder and divide it into a hundred or foot greater, theoretically, the yes. But once those lots conveyed, no one could come back and bring a individual lot for a subdivision because it would not meet the road frontage.
And if they wanna add more, more lots, they had to put a road in, and the road would be, infrastructure would then be a major development. And all due respect to Mr. Watts, just wanna make sure y'all understand our position, because Nancy and I have talked about this at length. Basically, when they got their plat recorded, those lots were lots of record, we looked at those as a lot, didn't it? It didn't matter to us whether it's in, where, when it was created or how it was created, it was a lot of record, period. They come in and want to subdivide those lots, that, as long as they're meeting our requirements and not installing infrastructure, then we looked at that as a minor subdivision under our regulations, they qualified for that. I cannot find anything in our subreg that will say, if this lot was divided as a major subdivision, you cannot further subdivide it, I don't think that language is in our regulations.
No, no, the question's the numbers, because when we have one lot come in, if we have somebody, for instance, that has a lot on Belangi Avenue next door to me, and they come in and divide that one lot in half. The application doesn't say one lot minor subdivision, it says two lot minor subdivision. Because it's counting both pieces, and that's my issue here.
The, the net of all the lot line adjustments, the net new lots is four.
Right, so while, so why, so why are other subdivisions, doesn't it say one lot minor subdivision? Instead of two lot, that, that's what I'm having trouble getting my.
May I make a suggestion and see if Ken is, uh, if it was processed as a major subdivision? In this particular subdivision, there are no improvements. So the way we have done that previously was process it as a major subdivision, but have simultaneous preliminary and final plat because there are no improvements? Is that?
I think I've, pardon me, I've seen examples of that, and you've done that by custom, what the regulations really contemplate is the two-step process. But the second step is to make sure they got the infrastructure in place. And look, I understand the staff's practical considerations, they're, they're urging to you. I think y'all have picked up on, we can't, it, it might be okay here, but we can't see everything coming down, down the path in the future. And our, our, our rules don't, don't say if, if they're adding four lots or fewer. It says if they're putting on a piece of land more than four lots, it's a major subdivision.
Okay.
So I, I appreciate and respect the, the staff's.
It's four.
Can I, we, I mean, we, I, I, I have a different issue, can I bring up?
Can I just add one thing, Emily, just to, regarding that solution, I checked with her about the processing for the fees, she said the fees will be more. So there will be a fee charge for that.
So in, in addition to all that, because we're all saying, well, there's no problem with the actual division, it's just that the process, I had some questions with the actual division that I wanted to address. So in the, when it was just four lots, um, there's this, well, in, in reading into the process, going through your comments, it was, okay, originally, there was no need for a tree survey. And then, oh, there's a forty-inch, forty-eight-inch heritage oak tree that's gigantic, that was originally on the perimeter of a very large lot, and now is dead center in a lot.
Well, I caught that when I did the aerial.
I appreciate that.
And I realized that there was one on there on the original survey, it did not show that, so.
Well, the, my, I see that the heritage tree protection during construction, if it's residential, can't you just cut it down?
It doesn't matter, yes, and the reason that, they, they put that on there out of choice. All I can do is, we have a tree survey requirement, when I saw there was a discrepancy, I said, hey, there looks to me like there's a big tree out there, can you double-check it? And, but it could be cut down because it is residential.
So it's more protected during construction if you don't decide to build your house on top of it? So that, just looking at it, if, um, that's something that would be, that probably wasn't considered when it was a major subdivision because that was on the perimeter, and clearly you would avoid it because it's an amenity. If it's in the middle of a smaller lot, even if it's a large two-acre lot, it's probably not gonna remain. Um, the other substantive thing, just to reiterate, it was already said, but, uh, with the smaller lots, you probably, the stormwater issue, that when it was originally approved and they were, the stormwater management was happening lot per lot, that makes a lot more sense with four lots. Doing that with seven, it, it's just a little less, uh, it's not the way we would like to see that done.
Well, and, and, and there is a, a magnitude, right, the smallest lot's over a hundred thousand square feet, right? So how big of a house is somebody gonna build there? Well, let's say they build a ten thousand square foot house and a super driveway, there's still only fifteen percent of impervious surface on a two point six acre lot. That's, when you consider that, you know, we just discussed subdivision with fifty-two-foot wide lots that were fifty-five percent coverage. This is, this is not one of those areas that I think we're gonna have any drainage issues with. Because just of the magnitude of the, of, I mean, even in the eastern shore, in the east of the city, to see the smallest lot being two point six, that, that, in our world, that's a big lot. You know, and, and I understand, I, I'm, I'm not justifying the process, I'm just trying to tell you how we got to the point where we are to say that we feel like that we've held them to the standard of the subdivision regulation. I think the issue is, is there's a, there's an interpretation of, is this a minor or is this a major? But regardless of what you recommend to us to move forward, nothing will change on this application as far as layout and how these lots will be developed in the future. It will just be whether there's two steps by this commission and some more money from the developer, which I'm, I'm not opposed to.
Well, just to beat it into the ground, so with a major subdivision, is there, there's no way for us to protect a heritage tree in a, in a, okay?
Not if it's on a lot.
And, and Mr. Chairman, just to make clear, the, the planning commission is the interpreter of the subreg, and the staff will, will go forward with whatever the planning commission decides as far as this goes. And if, if you think it should be a major, then we'll certainly get with the applicant and process it as a major and, and then do it that way.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the attorney.
Yes, sir.
Is there a way tonight to, uh, approve this, uh, as a major subdivision? And could, could we, uh, suspend with the rules to keep from putting it off until, because I said, I don't have a problem with the way it's drawn up now, but I wanna do it right. Can we suspend with the rules or vote for immediate consideration, something that we might have to vote on next month? Is that, is there a way to do that?
Well, it was noticed and, uh, published as a minor, but it is in fact nine lots. So if you, the public got, got notice that you were going to consider this division of property. A label of minor got put on it where it was really a major. So if you, I think if you're satisfied that all the requirements of the subdivision regulations are otherwise met.
For a major subdivision.
And you decide just to call it, put a label on it as, as a major and, and approve it as such, I think that's within your discretion.
Can I just say, is the applicant here that he, he would be willing, I think there would have to be, that he would at least be able to talk whether he was comfortable with it?
Why don't we go ahead and bring the applicant up and have the, and have the, uh, public hearing, and then discuss the possibilities?
Is somebody here for the development?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
My name is Seth Moore, the Moore Surveying.
Just one second, Seth.
If we open a public hearing, certain, certain requirements have to be, certain steps have to be taken. If he withdraw now before a public hearing, I give everybody time to all be thinking about it. If we open it, it's tendered as either a major proceeding, a preliminary, or a final. At the same time, or preliminary, then the, the commission has certain actions it can take, and only those actions it could take. So maybe some consideration should be given before the public hearing is opened by the developer to simply withdraw and perhaps resubmit next month.
He could withdraw, after the public hearing, he could withdraw on his own, couldn't he? As long as we don't call a vote.
Not once, not once we open a public hearing, we open a public hearing, it could be tabled.
The vote could be tabled, right.
It could be tabled, but only for thirty days, and the next meeting won't occur within thirty days.
And he can request for it to be tabled.
He could agree to a tabling for more than thirty days, yes. So if we open the public hearing, and he wants to avoid the denial, if a denial looks likely, then he would need to agree to a tabling for more than thirty, thirty days, yes.
Well, we can listen to the applicant right now, but without opening a public hearing, can we?
Sure. Yeah.
Okay.
All right, Seth.
To, where, qualify, um, we could have come in and done a realigning of lot lines without even talking to you all. And could have had those last four lots that are on Red Barn Road as a lot. And then we could have come to you all with a minor subdivision of those last four lots on Red Barn Road, only as a minor subdivision. And that's pretty much the way we interpreted, we're trying to do maybe one step instead of two. You know, we could, I can come tomorrow, two staff, with a realigning of lot lines or replating, five lots, just moving them all down. Which I would still have the two on the bottom and the two on the top, and then one left over. Or, I'm sorry, three on the top, two on the bottom, that would be five lots, plus, and then still come back to you all as an applicant, as a four-lot minor subdivision.
Of the lot that, where you moved all the lot lines to one side?
Shoved all those lot lines over to the west, and you had one, two, four, ten-acre lot.
Yeah.
On Red Barn Road.
Mm-hmm.
As one of the lots. They would have to sign that tomorrow, and I would go record it. Then I could come back and say, okay, the ten-acre lot, I wanna make four two-and-a-half acre lots. That would be a minor subdivision, no infrastructure either way. And you wouldn't be required to be held to a higher standard than what we're doing right now. We wouldn't have to adhere to the LID and that thing. So we're actually being held to a higher standard right now than we would if I did a realigning of lot lines two months ago and had, uh, Mr. Dyess sign the plat. And then come back with a four-lot minor subdivision of the four new lots.
Well, yes, Seth, but I don't see why that's any different than what you're doing right now. I mean, you shoved them, you, you talk about shoving them all down.
Correct.
And then taking, and then taking the residual, it's still, was sixteen original lots to start off with.
He's saying you wouldn't have had to add.
I think his point, I think his point is, is the lot line adjustment is, is administrative, the lot line adjustment doesn't require the planning commission.
He's saying the lot line adjustment is administrative, so.
Yeah, doesn't require the planning commission.
So they'd only be coming with one lot to four.
It's still a four, it's still a four lot.
I could name those four lots as some other subdivision.
Okay, well, I think it's.
I could rename it.
Sounds like semantics to me, and there's gotta be a way to get around, get around this without set, without getting, without setting the precedent.
But, Mr. Chairman, just to make sure. But Mr. Chairman, just to make sure, the, the nine lots, that's a misnomer. There are four lots that are being created. The lot line adjustment.
It was originally a sixteen-lot subdivision.
Right.
Originally.
But those large lots were recorded and platted. Now we have a lot of record. And they want to come back and do a, a minor subdivision where there's no infrastructure required. They're not, they're creating four lots. That's all.
And it sounds to me like that's the way our regulations read. Is that, is that right?
I believe they do, yes.
Okay, that's the way the regulations, you interpret the regulations read that way. If that's the way the regulations read that way, however, we don't necessarily concur with that.
Right.
We need to change the regulations.
Well, and you can interpret, like I said.
We need to make them more specific, that, that a given piece of property is considered a piece of property, not a reconfigure, I mean, you can reconfigure lot lines, but it all has to do with the number of lots that ultimately are on it. That would keep them from coming and bringing a, a, a forty-acre piece and having it divided four times into two, into four tens and then, and then four more times because they're saying it's a minor subdivision.
So if they came back with a major, so they came back and they want to do two lots, one ten acres and another ten acres, that would be a major subdivision? Assuming, assuming that that's the route we're going to take.
I'm sorry, what, what ten acres?
Just, so they want four, four units, they want four lots. Assuming they said, no, we just want two lots. Two lots on this property instead of the four, would that still be a major subdivision? And you, do you believe it's a major subdivision?
On this subdivision?
Yes. My, my point is, is that we've got large lots that have been recorded. They're, they, these lots exist, they're lots of record. They're coming back with a minor subdivision of those lots. And as I read our subdivision regulations, I don't see anything that says, no, you can't, they have to be a major. I just don't, I just don't see that.
My only issue is I wish Seth had done exactly what he said. And I wish he had come to you and got the lot lines moved and then applied it that way and then I would have no problem at all.
And that's, I mean, the lot line does not, yeah, does not, doesn't take the planning commission to move lot lines. That's done administrative and you're, you're right, Mr. Chairman.
I do have a question for Seth, if that's okay?
Yes.
On the, I just had some questions about the way that the lots were divided in that sort of bound parcel at the bottom. Is there, what was the reasoning behind lot twenty-five? It seems, there is so much land that I, that I'm, I'm unclear why we've got this big oak tree in the middle of a lot and then we've got this, this island lot. If you had so much room to move, was there an intended use for that, isn't it twenty-five? Is.
The flag lot.
Buried in there?
Yeah, the flag lot, as we call it. The reason for the tree and actually the, the person that would like to build on a lot that has the tree, they don't want to cut it down.
Okay.
Because they're going to build close to Red Barn Road and they've got plenty of room behind it to not have to disturb that tree.
Okay.
I mean, again, it's the only tree out there. Why in the world would you cut it down? It's the only shade tree you've got out there. I mean, whether it was ten inches or twenty-five inches, or in this case.
Or forty-eight.
Forty-eight inches. I mean, it's, it's a tree that you would want to keep. It adds value to your lot.
Yeah.
If you cut it down.
Well, that's, that's reassuring to hear. Yeah, I just, without knowing that.
Right.
The configuration raised questions, but, but why the, the bottom piece that was subdivided into those?
The lots along Red Barn Road, Mr. Hollingshead does not own anymore, okay? That's for y'all's consideration as well. But the, they've had problems with trying to sell the larger lots and that's why they made them a little bit smaller lots, the five acres and smaller. They sold the three-acre lots really quick. And the other lots, yes, they've sold them. They sold one of the larger sixteen-acre lot, I believe it was. They have sold it to one individual. Of course, if he decides to call it Boone Road Subdivision and come back to you all with a major subdivision, putting in streets and stuff, well, he'd have to do that.
Rebecca, that lot that you're speaking of, where the flag lot is, that bump out is actually wetlands. They kept the wet, the wetlands totally out of that lot. That's why there's a bump out, because that is where the wetlands are located.
Right. Yeah, well, the, the lot to the south of it, we had to make that bump out so that the driveway that goes to that back lot is out of the buffer zone.
Okay.
We have the wetlands, then the thirty-foot, and then we left another twenty-foot so that they could be able to put in a driveway and infrastructure for that lot number three.
Okay. Is lot twenty-five sold as well?
No. Well, none of them are sold. You can't sell lots until you have them platted. That's law.
But, but he doesn't own the, the ones you just told us?
Well, the ones, lot, I believe it's nine to the east of the original subdivision, he no longer owns on Red Barn Road. The only ones he owns.
So they're talking about the lots. You know whoever owns these lots and all?
Oh, okay.
He only owns these up here. They're trying to reconfigure these with more like three of lots. That's what they came up with, two, one, six, seven lots.
Before the questions for the developer?
No, I, I think what the planning commission is trying to prevent is somebody coming in with a certain piece of property, breaking it up into two and then four and then eight and then sixteen, thirty-two, and you wind up with a huge subdivision. They never followed any of the subdivision regulations. They got around it by, you know, calling everything a minor subdivision. And I think that's what we're, what we're mindful of here and I, I appreciate your explanation. I had a question for Wayne. Wayne, so your example that you asked Mr. Dias, the other Mr. Dias about, you said if you had two ten-acre parcels and you broke them into four, would you call it a major?
Well, my point was, is, is we have four lots here. And if you broke these into two lots, would, I mean, because it sounds like that the, the issue is, is that we have a major subdivision from a couple of years ago, that they want, with large lots and they want to divide additional lots off of that. And that sounds like that's the issue to me. And then my point was, at what point do we not call it a, a, a major? If they want to do one lot, is that still a major because that was part of a major subdivision? Even though they're, they aren't requiring to have any utilities or no new roads or anything else? I guess my point is, is what point do we, so when people come in in the future for us, we can guide them appropriately on what to do. So my point was, is at what level, if you have a, a lot that's created by a major subdivision, at what point can they subdivide that without having to go back to the major?
Well, I wanted to try to answer your question. So if you broke it into four, is it greater than four lots as a major or four or more?
It's four or more.
Okay, then I would have said yes and that would have been, to answer your question for him, it would have been a major.
Right, right.
Okay, then it wouldn't have been, then it would have been a minor.
Should have been five or more.
Well, I wanted a clarification on that. Now, let me give you an example of something that I worry about. Somebody comes to us and they want to put in a twenty-lot subdivision and they go have perk tests and they can't put in a retention pond because the groundwater might not be deep enough. And so they cannot meet the subdivision regulations. Right now, there's nothing to prevent that person from carving off one lot and developing it and then another lot and then another lot. Next thing you know, you have twenty lots on the same piece of property with no water management, stormwater management at all. And we're going to run into that situation if, if we don't come up with something. And maybe we can't do it tonight. And like I said, Mr. Moore, I'm not opposed to the way this is broken up. I'm not. I'm, what I'm worried about is setting precedents in us not managing our land correctly and then running into, and then ten years down the road when these twenty lots are broken up piecemeal and everybody says, well, the city's got to fix this problem because the stormwater, you know, is running over my land and washing out my backyard when it, and it was never meant to be able to hold twenty lots.
And I understand that and I appreciate those comments. I guess what we're bound by is how, how we read the ordinance. And I think that it sounds like we may have an issue we want to, may want to address with some sort of amendment because that's, that's the, that's what it sounds like to me. I understand where Councilman Burrell's going with that. But when I read the ordinance and we apply those, those standards, I saw it as a minor. And so, I mean, I mean, and obviously there's a difference of opinion and I respect that and we'll, we'll be glad from this point forward to process those as a minor, as majors. I guess, you know, I just want to make sure you understand my position where, as staff, where we looked at this and how we looked at it.
Seems to me perhaps the solution, one solution would be to change the regulations, but at this point, if we've got a, an application in front of us to, to judge it by the way our regulations read at the moment. We don't like the way they read, then we need to change them.
But our attorney thinks that it's a major.
Right. And, and if it's denied, then he cannot reapply for six months, which that's a concern about it.
And then the other option is though, is just to ask the applicant if there's a way to, if we changed the definition of it tonight before we opened up the public hearing and then had the public hearing as a major subdivision, we could approve it as a major subdivision. Tonight, is that theoretically correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, that's another, that's a good option.
And it wouldn't change anything from the way I understand it. That's what I'd feel more comfortable with.
It would or it wouldn't?
It would not.
So if we.
Outside of the fee, we'd be losing some fees.
If we change the definition.
We'd be losing some fees.
I mean, losing some fees, well, that would like that.
So if we change the definition, it doesn't have to go through council before we change?
We wouldn't be, we wouldn't be changing the definition. We'd be calling the label that has been placed on this application. It's been labeled a minor subdivision. But it was published and it went out to, to, to the public as a division of this piece of land into nine other pieces of land. So that is, that's a major. So all we're doing is changing, changing the label that's been put on this.
We're not making a material change, in other words. We're not really changing the way the land is defined. We're just changing the word.
We're not changing anything but, other than the label that was put on this application.
That's right. What is it, Seth?
Well, I talked to the developer and he said if it's a major subdivision, we'll call it a major subdivision.
Okay.
All right. In that case, if everybody in the audience understands, we're going to look at this as a major subdivision, but since there are no improvements, we can vote for the preliminary and the final plat both tonight.
I just wanted to add one other thing. The developer did talk to the neighboring people, sent out an email to everybody letting them know what was going on. And I think he had one applicant or one person that was over a quarter of a mile away that did have some concern about drainage, which was the same person that came up in the original about drainage and they were, I know most of them were happy that we weren't putting in a detention area because they didn't want one point source that would flood them out on the other end. They would rather have the sheet flow, which that's what, you know, we're doing with this subdivision. So I just wanted to put that out there as well.
In that case, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. And we have Joy and Bruce Larson are both listed on our list to speak.
Would you just, would you just clarify for the record that you are opening this up as a hearing on a major subdivision?
As a major subdivision hearing that we will look at both preliminary and final plat tonight.
Hey, Councilman. My name is Bruce Larson. I have three and a half to four acres on the east side of this in the middle of the development. Now, this map here is only half of the development. They've cut it off. This area, this area is fairly flat, but it does drain down toward my, my four acres and I happen to be in the low spot. And I'm the guy, Mr. Burrell, that that water goes through. I'm sandwiched between Fish River and this development. And I'm in a low spot where the water rushes down. My main concern about this is that, like you were saying, you, they're only talking about half of this development. What if they come back later and want to carve up the rest of that that's on a very steep hill? If you go into the coffee loft and you look down that hill, that's, that's the hill that is on this. It looks flat here, but it is very steep. And the water that's coming down that hill will knock you off your feet in a hurricane. And it, it has eaten into my property really badly. I'm not saying that's any fault of Mr., well, the developer. But this is an old community. This is, it's, it's not a subdivision. We all came out and supported this at, at the beginning of this. Because the acreage was large, because he said horses could be there. That's what we wanted when we drive in. We would like to have the acreage big enough for horses, for somebody maybe to have their own garden out there, chickens, whatever. We wanted something different from the subdivision. Horses are, they're, you can't have a horse, they're social creatures. You need two horses on a plot of land and for that you need five acres. These were just things that were told to me that made our community come out and support this. I am concerned about the water runoff. I'm concerned about too many driveways. I'm really just concerned about this slippery slope of where this is going. Because I was told one thing and now a year later or less, it's changing. And I'm just afraid it's going to change again and again. And I was told that, that they could not subdivide this. And now it sounds like, you know, maybe it can be subdivided. I'm not a lawyer. I'm just a guy that lives right there and, you know, I, I'm, I'm against this. Mr. Hogg said, he's a nice man, but I'm, I just don't know. I just felt I had to come and, and speak today. As I do have concerns, as I'm losing land. And I, you know, these, the river's coming up faster these days and that hill is, you'd have to just drive out there and see it. But it's, it's one of the steeper hills. It's there because of the water runoff. It's, it's a steep hill because over the eons, water's been rushing down to the river and going downriver. And we're getting, it's getting worse and worse. The, the erosion and the flooding are both getting worse. And I don't know what to do except come here and speak about it, so.
Thank you, Bruce. You know, one thing that, you know, I think Holly will attest that I always say when somebody comes in with a subdivision, there's nothing ever to keep them from re-subdividing other than some type of a deed restriction if they don't, which they can only imply that, you know, we can't require. They can only.
Right.
Put those on themselves. So if we don't have, if they don't put a deed restriction, it's just like Seth said, you know, one of the people that purchased one of the other lots could come in next month wanting to be.
I was told that wouldn't, couldn't or wouldn't happen. And I'll say that, that hill is, there are, you know, I'm, I'm a little concerned. I know, I don't know who bought the three-acre lots that are already there, but they bought lots thinking that they were going to be near larger lots where horses and gardens or that sort of thing. You're subdividing, you're lying to those people. I think a lot, I don't know, but some of those people could be from out of town and they couldn't be here tonight. So what they thought they bought, they're not getting. And that bothers me. And the whole place is covered with gopher tortoises too. I don't know if that's relevant, but I, I walk, I've walked that property and I used to run back there before he bought it. And there's gopher tortoises all over. And I know they're not quite protected, but they should be. Because they are in the states around us, so that's another thing, so, okay.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, may I comment on that as well?
Yes, sir.
And I know that we have other people that are probably wanting to speak, but Mr. Larson, I have a great respect for you and what you have to say. And I know that you're an outstanding person. And one of the things that maybe after the public hearing, we can have the, you know, Mr. Moore or there's an engineer record, a surveyor, come up and speak. Sometimes, and I can give examples, one that was recently proposed by you, Mr. Turner, that, that, that drainage techniques can actually improve a property and make the downhill properties less susceptible to erosion. It, it is possible, and I'm not telling you that it is because I don't know, but I'm just looking through, you know, some of the drainage stipulations in here and it's saying that this water runoff does have to go in a storm sewer. There are times when a developer is, is put in and they manage the water more properly or, or better for the people downstream than the existing conditions. It does, it does occur.
You've not yet experienced that.
Right.
Joy, are you going to speak? You're on the list if you'd like to.
Well.
You do, you do, hey, Joy, you do need to come up. You do, you do, hey, Joy, you do need to come up and we've got your address from Bruce, but you do need to speak into the microphone for our recording. Get that to the water around that way.
I'm Joy Rose Larson. I wasn't really planning on saying anything, but I would like to make it clear that my home has flooded in Hurricane Danny. And we had over six feet of water in our house. We're up on pilings now, but that water comes higher and higher. I mean, when it comes up, I have to kayak to the road. We have to move our cars. It's, you know, I'm getting a little old for, for that.
And that's with the land being undeveloped right now, correct?
Yes. But I think it's just, you know, on Fish River, everybody wants to build around Long Fish River and the water just, it, it comes up so fast. And it's scary.
Yeah. Sister County has been redoing all the culverts. It's coming up a lot faster on Calpine Creek where I live. It's amazing. One of my sons, the other day we had a four in a trailer, and one of my sons told me he heard the creek running, and I thought he was crazy and went out. Sure enough, it was because all those collapsed and fallen in culverts were working as water retention into farmers' fields. And it's a lot safer for the drivers now, but I've got to be a lot more careful with my boat and canoes and everything else.
So we're just concerned about what's happening, not only up above us, but upstream. So, thanks.
Thank you, Joy. Anybody else wish to speak to this item?
Lee, I would like to add, I have spoken to several of the neighbors, Mr. Charles Bishop and another Mr. Bishop who live across the street that are concerned with the smaller lots as well as the flooding and the drainage in that area. They are against the smaller lots.
Yes, sir.
Hey, I'm Monty Montgomery. I live on Highland Drive, which is, yep, I did talk to her briefly. I, I wish I knew a little bit more about your subdivision regulations and I guess the ins and outs of each one, but I guess not really knowing what I'm talking about has never really stopped me from talking before. So I figured I'd get up here and just kind of give you my two cents, but here are the, here are the things that I heard tonight. I heard that you have specific LIDs for these lots and that when it was in larger lots, there were specific requirements that were carried over to the new lots that Mr. Moore said, had he done it in a different manner, he could have just adjusted the lot lines. Nobody would have known and there would have been no mechanism to enforce these LID requirements on the now new lots that were done purely on a boundary maneuver. So, you know, this is something, this is the kind of thing that your planning commission needs to take note of and come back at a work session and figure out a way to prevent this from happening in the future, okay? The other thing that I heard was, uh, well, I didn't hear...
But he would, that would not have included the addition of four lots. He was saying they could have moved the lots around, but since he would not be in that case, uh, creating more lots, he would be creating more of a burden as far as water runoff.
Say that one more time, Joy.
When he said he could have moved the lot lines administratively, that would not have included increasing lots. That would have just been moving the lots, not increasing the four.
Got it. I've not heard any mention, and I, and I, again, I don't know enough about this. There's varying degrees of quality with respect to engineers that design neighborhoods, stormwater management systems and things like that. I have not heard anything to address the issues of, there's going to be an increase, there's going to be a double the impervious surfaces as a result of the subdivision, okay? I heard that there are, there were LIDs that were in place because of these large lots that perhaps pushed this thing through its first approval phase that, uh, I don't know if it's going to maintain every time somebody comes down here and does a subdivision. And I think what you're finding here is this is almost, this is like self-stealth subdivision development. You have the ability to come in here and take a, a five or 10 acre lot, make it into a smaller lot, then come over here to this quarter of your neighborhood and divide it again. And, and I, I think it's just, it's not the character of the neighborhood. It's, it's not that bad look with a two and a half acre lot, that's fine. But you've left yourself open to the ability to have somebody that may not be a very scrupulous developer that will lie in wait and have a large parcel and then do it small sections at a time. And you're going to end up with a neighborhood that, that the first buyers never intended to be a part of, okay? And, and, I mean, I, I've had the same concerns about the, uh, the property owners that have already bought lots. I mean, they're, they're going to be backed up to lots that are half the size they thought they were going to be. So, um, the only other issue I wanted to point out was that it, I mean, the announcement does say nine lot, minor subdivision, so it sounds like there are nine lots. So maybe that's just screwed up lawyer way of reading things, Ken.
I don't know.
But I was thinking it was going to be nine lots. So if my vote counts for something, I'm going with nine.
Can I ask for a clarification based on things you brought, well, actually not of, clarification of staff, but, but based on points she brought up? With the, with the LID and, and stormwater techniques, you know, I was reading this as a Larson who are speaking, the notes on the plans, kind of like the tree protection notes on the plans, I'm curious about the enforcement mechanism and if this note has teeth. You know, the adequate drainage for each lot should be provided at the time of home construction. No developed lot shall discharge stormwater into a neighboring lot without drainage adjustment, blah, blah, blah. And, and the LIDs per lot, what's the, it's, there's not a requirement for those to be engineered. What is the enforcement mechanism now that we've broken that up lot by lot? I'm just, I'm curious how that works.
Because this is, this is outside the corporate limits. This is not in the city. Um, but I believe, Nancy, you did say it was in our permit jurisdiction, and so we issued a building permits. They can flag that in the municipal system for building permits, and that will be evaluated at the time of building permit before they get a C.O.
And there is a note on the previous plat, this plat submitted, I, I've put it as a condition of approval. It says, "The owner of each lot shall provide to the City of Fairhope Planning Department a signed and sealed certification from an Alabama-registered professional civil engineer." And this, the old note says, "and wetland specialist," stating that the drainage and LID have met the City of Fairhope requirements for drainage and LID requirements.
Okay.
But we talked about it just a few minutes before the meeting, the wetland specialist really isn't needed. He does need to revise the note to match this, but the wetland specialist is not needed because this plat is outside of those wetlands. So that clears that up.
And just so you know, the internal procedure, what will happen is when somebody applies for a building permit, particularly a lot, they will have to submit a signed and sealed drainage plan that meets our standards. And they're going to basically have to calculate what is the differential runoff, how they're capturing it, and how they're, how they're managing it using our LID technology. So, and I will tell you...
That's what I was looking for.
With, with, with Eric, he, what he does, as soon as these lots are registered and given a, a parcel identification number, he puts that in municipal, so as soon and flags it. So as soon as the application comes in for that, that parcel, it, it shows that that is a requirement of the, the building permit. And, and he'll bring that to me and I'll review it.
So, so are there specific LID techniques that are going to be employed with this new nine lot subdivision? And that's kind of the, that was, that was why I made the remarks that sometimes the drainage may actually be improved. I can't guarantee you that, young man, but sometimes through these techniques, you may actually have improved drainage and not worse. You're right, it, it's going to be doubling the impervious surface theoretically.
And look, I've done enough of this type of work to know that you don't want a single point of discharge, especially if it's not pointed downhill right at my house that's going to go into Fish River. I mean, I can get that part.
Yeah.
But the reality is, I've yet to see, I mean, I've been involved in litigation with, with municipalities before that have given the green light to neighborhoods. And then when it comes down to time to step in and actually condemn property so that it can be fixed and do it the right way, they don't want to do it. They just say, "Go find the engineer." And there's engineers all over the state of Alabama running around naked with no insurance, and they got nothing to go collect in a judgment. You can't get them to do the work the right way and you're left without any relief. So, I mean, if, if there's a body that is here to protect the property owners in the adjoining area, it's y'all, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else wish to speak, speak to this item? Seth, I'll get you back up in just a minute after the public hearing is closed. Anybody else wish to speak to this item? In that case, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. Seth, do you have anything else before I turn this over to commissioners?
Yes, sir. Well, to answer one of your questions about...
If you'll, if you, hey, Seth, please speak to the...
Excuse me, I'm sorry. To answer one of the questions about, uh, engineers running out there without insurance, as a subdivision requirement that the City of Fairhope has, you all require engineers to have a million dollar E and O insurance policy. So if they say go to the engineer, then, you know, he's on the liability end of that. Now, the other thing about additional runoff is going, is only actually been one house in construction right now. So I don't think you're going to see any more runoff that's what there before. And actually, when there was a farm field there, you probably had more runoff than what you're going to have with grass fields because they can change their crop angle and, you know, have more runoff than, than you would have now with houses. But, uh, I don't know if there's any other questions.
Mr. Moore, can you state that the, um, LID techniques that'll be employed or any other drainage techniques would be employed would at least, uh, render this no worse than it is now? Is there, is there any possibility of you saying it would be improved?
I would say it would be improved. I mean, you, you're going to use according to the regulations and according to the restrictive covenants that are recorded right now, and they are going to amend that, which y'all have a copy of. Uh, that, you know, they're, they have several things they can use, but they can use the rain gardens, they can use the, uh, underground little detention areas. The soil that's out there is a very good sandy loam soil, so it will perk down. Of course, once you put up a fence on a piece of property and you're mowing it, you know what happens along the fence? It, it almost creates its own buffer with a fence. You know, even if it's three, four inches, you create a buffer and it slows down the runoff. So, but yes, with your LID, I believe we met, I want to say it was nine out of the 12, or in our things that we were, uh, have recorded to, for a person to use. And there again, uh, they have to submit a plan to the building department, uh, for various uses of LIDs.
Can I bring up a couple of points just for clarification? A minor subdivision does not necessarily have to have, a, a lot of times surveyors will process those, not, uh, engineer. So they don't always have certificates of insurance. I just checked the file, this one does. There is an engineer that is working with Mr. Moore on this, which is Larry Smith, S.C. Civil. So in this particular case, there is a certificate of insurance provided. So I just wanted to make sure y'all were...
No other reason to keep it a major subdivision.
Commissioners, any more questions for the developer while he's up? The, the public hearing's over. I'm, I'm sorry, we've got to move on. Any more questions for the... All right, thank you, Seth. All right, commissioners, any further questions for staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for approval.
Go ahead.
Contingent upon staff recommendations.
You want to make a motion to approve the, the preliminary and the final plat?
Uh, if we need to do it, if we can do it in one motion, or if I want to make a preliminary first, uh, we'll do preliminary first, but...
Okay, you can do it in one motion.
Okay. To grant preliminary and final plat approval.
Okay. I have a motion to, uh, approve the preliminary and final plat approval subject to staff recommendations. And I have a second. Any further?
As a major subdivision?
As a major, preliminary and the final. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, say nay. All right, aye to pass this unanimously. Uh, last item on our agenda is Old Battles Place Phase Two.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we have before you Old Battles Place Phase Two. Chairman, Commissioners, this is a new application, therefore a new, a new case number, S.D. 18.27. The previous version, the previous hearing of Old Battles Place Phase Two was case number S.D. 18.21. So I wanted to illuminate that we have a new case number, a re, a new submission for this project. I'll begin with illuminating for the commission the history on the site. So we'll begin with the annexation and zoning of the property. ZC 0619 zoning request. The request, of course, was to zone it to R5 High Density Dwelling Residential District with concurrent annexation to, at the time, the development was named Battles Point. The circa 2006 survey reflected 40.7077 acres. That was in unzoned Baldwin County. At the time a traffic study was conducted, no improvements were recommended to County Road Three or County Road Thirty Four, which are South Section Street and Old Battles Road. The proposed development at the time was capped at five units per acre. Ten units per acre is allowable in R5. And as we said, that the, the original, uh, the original proposal was a development to be called Battles Point. Just some brief details about that. In that file from ZC 0619, there was different sets of supporting documents in there. There was actually two sets of plans. One development proposed 150 units or 3.685 units per acre, which would have been apartment units. There was also a set of plans in that same file that proposed 150 apartment units and 42 townhomes. And it's a bit difficult to see, but there's actually, that proposal is in the small inset diagram you see on your slide right here. That would have been 192 units or 40.717 units per acre at the time. Unanimous approvals, or forgive me, unanimous approvals.
Forty point seven units per acre?
Forty point seven, uh, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That should be four point seven one seven.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Council President. Yes, sir. Unanimous approvals occurred on second October in 2006, and then final approval by the City Council on the thirteenth of November in 2006. Again, some additional brief, uh, some additional, uh, history here. Case number S.D. 16.16, this was the first hearing of the municipal occupancy projects. So the prior phase, phase one, the case we're hearing to do phase two is an MOP. That was approved by the Planning Commission October third of 2016. Phase one included 110 total apartment units. Traffic study was included with that, uh, application, did not recommend improvements to South Section Street or Old Battles Road. The Baldwin County Highway Department requested an evaluation of a multiway stop. That evaluation was performed for County Road Three and County Road Thirty Four for that intersection. Multiway stop was not recommended. Streets within the development are not expected to be dedicated to the city. The required setbacks for R5 zoning are 30 foot, 30 foot front, 35 foot rear and 10 foot side. The approved setbacks for that development, 30 foot front, 35 foot rear, 25 feet along the northern property line, 30 feet along the southern property line, which exceeds the requirements of R5 zoning. Chairman, Commissioners, this is an excerpt of the traffic study conducted by Sanin Associates in 2016. And zooming in here, this is the text where the engineer for Sanin Associates indicates not recommending the improvements to County Road Three or County Road Thirty Four. This slide right here, very similar to the prior hearing of the case, to illuminate the buffer requirements that are included with the site, the wood fence line on the east side, and also to illuminate for you, the existing undisturbed buffers to remain in lieu of a perimeter planning. This is very similar to what was reflected in phase one. We'll make a note here, a lift station for phase one was sized for the entire development. Its volume and capacity upgraded upon request by the city. The landscape buffers, again, as we saw on the previous slide, the vegetative buffer along portions of the west property line, complete northern property line and portion of the east property line. A portion of the east property line includes a six foot wooden privacy fence. The balancing site will include a non-disturbed 20 foot wide vegetative buffer. We'll talk about low-impact development techniques for phase one. Five LID techniques were incorporated into the site. We'll note here for you that phase one and phase two share some LID techniques. Depending upon how the techniques are categorized, the site contains at least six techniques. We'll illuminate that, illuminate that in the recommendation for, in the recommendation for, uh, phase two. Possibly eight techniques, and I'll explain that there because of the way LID techniques are categorized. At phase one, a third-party review was conducted by Larry Smith of S.C. Civil Engineering of the drainage system on phase one. Moving to phase two, the current request reflects... Moving to phase two, the current request reflects 94 apartment home units. That would bring the total number of units on site to 204. That calculates to a site density of 4.989 units per acre. Utilizing 204 units, the most recent survey of the site reflects 40.89 acres. In 2006, or ZC 0616 staff report, part of the background information I found in that staff report note that a six units per acre would be allowable had the project remained in unzoned Baldwin County. We'll begin our discussion of low-impact development techniques for phase two. Maintaining continuity with phase one, a waiver of the 10 LID technique requirements is requested. There are six LID techniques occurring in 21 locations in phase two, and those LID techniques are more fully described in the side, in the slides that follow. We'll go through each one, we'll go through each one one by one, very similar to what we did at the earlier application. Let's talk about erosion control methods for phase two very briefly here. What is proposed and what is included in the construction plans will be to base, provide base and pave, propose roadway with a binder layer, install the landscaping and stabilize all areas, then remove the silt fence waddles and any accumulated sediment inline drainage and retention areas. There are also sideways connections to the, sidewalk connections to the right-of-way that are detailed on the next slide. And just to back up a bit there, Mr. Chairman, what, Chairman Commissioners, what that will mean is that the initial application of asphalt will be the binder layer they will, they are proposing to utilize that as their working service to drive upon, drive upon that binder layer, then they'll have a final layer at completion of the project. This application includes sidewalk connections to the existing right-of-ways. One will be at the southeast corner of the property at County Road Thirty-four, Old Battles Road. Another at the southwest corner of the property, near the intersection of South Section Street and Old Battles. Then another at the northwest corner of the property to the edge of the subject property along County Road Three. And so the inset maps are a bit small, but in each of those locations, you'll, in each of those locations, the five-foot wide, the five-foot wide sidewalk is called out. So it connects to the right-of-way. The sidewalk runs contiguous to the right-of-way, turns and enters the site, and then allows the pedestrian to enter the, to leave the right-of-way, enter the site, pass through the site, then exit back onto the right-of-way at the intersection of South Section and Old Battles, or continue traversing through the site and exit at South Section Street, which you see on the far right detailed drawing. We'll go through the LID techniques in detail. The drawing on the far right in this slide shows, is a color-coded drawing the engineer provided us, showing all of the LID techniques in phase one. You'll see a similar drawing for phase two. And similar to the application we saw earlier tonight, the color-coded items there, we pulled the chart out of the subdivision regulations and color-coded the LID techniques to be used. As you can see here in phase one, they're using three of the pre-approved techniques right here, two of them with 80% TSS removal, one with 50% TSS removal. Proposed for phase two, very similarly, you'll see the same, the same drawing, color-coded. You'll see the pre-approved list of LID techniques from the subdivision regulations, again, an 80% and a 50%. There are other LID techniques above and beyond that that are also allowed and contemplated by the subdivision regulations. We'll describe those here in just a moment. They are utilizing grass swales. And as you can tell by the slide right there, GS, they're labeled GS, GS one, two, three, and four. Those grass wells are utilized in phase one. GS five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10 are proposed for phase two. What you'll see here is in addition, similar to the application we saw earlier tonight, I provided some additional supporting documentation from the Alabama LID handbook, just to give some additional research that supports the TSS removal of those LID techniques. Here, we show you the grass wells, the actual location of the grass wells in phase one. Again, apologies because of the small drawing, but the GS one, two, three, and four, they make the upper arced band across the top of the drawing, going left, right, one through three. And then below the grass buffer number one, the GB one on the left side, there's an additional swell. Proposed for phase two, GS five, six, GS five through GS 10 in phase two are your grass swales LID technique. In addition, there are grass buffers, labeled GB, one, two, and three in phase one, four, five, and six in phase two, similarly as we talked about originally. You'll notice that the sediment removal is a bit lower for these items. That is also supported by the Alabama Low Impact Development, the Alabama LID handbook. Inset drawings here showing you phase one, GB one, two, and three, and then four, five, and six in phase two. And those are your grass buffers. Permeable pavement systems. They're utilizing permeable pavement systems. They're using pervious concrete, 25% of the parking spots in phase one. It'll also be used for 25% of the parking spots in phase two. In addition, is serving as an allowable LID technique, as we talked about in Article Five. This also satisfies the 25% pervious material requirements of the zoning ordinance for sites with more than eight parking spots. Now, I'll note here, and you'll see supported by the, the chart right there from the Alabama LID handbook, this is not going to be calculated into the TSS removal, because it's not contemplated as a TSS removal technique, but it is absolutely an approved LID technique in the subdivision regulations. Constructed wetlands, this occurs in phase one. We're going to count it in phase two, because it reduces the treatment volume of phase two. And again, you see there, that, you see where that occurs. It is the CW with a red cloud around it on the east side of the property, and you see the TSS removal on that is anywhere from 80 to 85%, based upon the research in the Alabama LID handbook. This site also features inline storage, which is basically oversizing a pipe that gives some additional storage, contemplated by the, contemplated by the subdivision regulations. It is occurring, you see it's clouded in the center of the bio-retention detention pond. And what that does is oversizing the outfall pipe, as we said, provides stormwater attenuation, which is the storage of extra stormwater during the peak of a storm. Does not provide a TSS removal per se, but it is definitely an approved LID technique. Chairman Commissioners, we'll talk about bio-retention here, and I'll give the data behind it. It was installed in phase one, it serves phase one and phase two. And without getting into the minutia, but we just wanted to demonstrate that this is, that this is covered. Using the similar calculation, the similar equation we talked about previously tonight, you notice we have the breakdown, the engineer provided us in phase one and phase two, a breakdown of the total acres of phase one and phase two. He breaks down the acres of, the acreage of treatment area by the grass buffers, by the grass swales, by the constructed wetland, and then also treated by the bio-retention pond. And he gives us his impervious cover of 38%, which he assumes that gets plugged into the equation. The 85% treatment that we talked about earlier tonight, as well as the 1.8 inches, the first flush of 1.8 inches of rainfall, all of those are, all of those are elements, all of those are variables in that volume treatment equation. Phase two, we have the total acreage, you break down, he's broken down each type, the grass buffers and grass swales and the bio-retention, seemingly that cover. So we have that covered there. This drawing shows the actual bio-retention pond, which is your detention pond for this site, but it's a bio-retention area. And the engineer calculated the, as you can see, the number, the amount of cubic feet to have, to account for phase one and phase two. The total required was, as you can see, 42,612 cubic feet of storage. They're furnishing a pond that has 72,210 cubic feet of storage. So therefore, you have 29,598 cubic feet of allowable surplus storage in that bio-retention area. And again, you see the chart right there explaining its TSS removal. So that brings us to, what are, what are our conclusions about LIDs? Well, as we stated, there are six techniques in 21 locations on the entire site. Again, the entire treatment volume has been accounted for in the stormwater design, assuming the impervious cover determined by the engineer. Break, as you see, I've broken down right there, the grass swales, anywhere from 35 to 80% TSS removal, the buffers are anywhere from 40 to 50% TS removal. They treat and pretreat the stormwater that flows into the bio-retention area that has a TSS removal of 80 to 85%, which of course satisfies the goals of the subdivision regulations. We'll discuss here, LID techniques not utilized on the site. And for example, a wet basin was not used because a bio-retention area is used in lieu of that. Rain gardens would be typically a small-scale drainage treatment technique, and there's already a constructed wetland being utilized. A sand filter, and then you notice the, which is a small volume treatment. The step pools, the site design for habitat, the restoration of habitat or wetlands are elements, are features that don't exist on that site. And I made a note here, and this is strictly a staff, staff opinion here, greenways are an LID technique. It can be argued that the areas encompassing the grass wells and grass buffers are also greenways, with, greenways, which would potentially add one more LID technique. Same comment for the level spreader, is that it could be argued that that is also covered as an LID technique. Chairman Commissioners, this is an excerpt of the letter asking for a waiver of the four remaining LID techniques from the engineer of record. And then as you see in the inset right there, where the engineer lists the different LID techniques utilized on the site. So therefore, that brings us to a staff recommendation, and because this is a multiple occupancy project, similar to, but not identical to a typical subdivision, to trigger the formal closeout procedure in lieu of a final plat approval process, it will require several conditions of approval. Similar comments to what we saw on the earlier MOP tonight about the closeout procedures utilized that we trigger via conditions of approval. So our staff recommendation for approval is subject to the following conditions, because again, there's not a final plat process with this. The pre-construction conference, and prior to land disturbance associated with phase two, they can continue, we're clarifying that incidental land disturbance associated with phase one may continue. We would work with, in item B, we'll work with the building official to develop the sequencing of the home construction and the request for inspection. And on an MOP, that's important for coordination purposes, why we place it in the condition of approval. Number two, as we stated earlier, acceptance of the request of waiver of 10 LID techniques, and the acceptance of the use of six LID techniques. A similar waiver was approved for phase one. The six LID techniques occur in 21 locations throughout phase one and phase two, as we stated earlier. And Chairman, items three, we talk again about the building official monitoring the construction of the site. When the building official determines approximately 75% of the apartment homes have obtained certificate of occupancy, will begin initiating the closeout procedure. Again, these are our standard MOP closeout requirements that we put as conditions of approval. Illuminate for you here, item E, the copy of the landscape as-built drawings with a statement from the landscape architect indicating the various landscape fixtures have been completed as designed. This is a specific requirement staff, staff asks of the planning commission. We note earlier that the maintenance bond, it's likely the lift station would be the only item dedicated back to the city. And so, Mr. Chairman, that is our staff recommendation for this MOP. A lot of information very quickly, before we bring the engineer, before we bring the engineer, before the commission, I'm certainly helped, certainly happy to answer any questions from staff.
I've got a question. Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
Buford. In staff's recommendations, and does this, does this plan meet the city's rules and regulations?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And I'll illuminate that, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I think, I focused a lot on the LID techniques, so the, if you look at this slide, we've gone back here, and forgive me for expounding maybe too much, but just to, just to restate here, the submitted system is designed to meet the 80% TSS removal goal, in compliance with the subdivision regulations. And I use that as one example of answering the question as yes.
Thank you, Buford. I really would like to speak on behalf of...
Can we maybe give an opportunity to ask questions?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Normally, I was gonna get the engineer to go and then public hearing and bring anybody...
I'm sorry, I'm still new. I like to ask questions of the staff while they're up there.
Absolutely, go ahead. Yes, sir.
Buford, the, for these MOPS, are there, what are the, are the same requirements in place for these subdivisions as there are for another type of subdivision? In other words, does 10% of the land have to be set aside for green space?
Yes, sir. The, the, many of the basic requirements are reflected in the MOPs, in the MOPs, and not all of the subdivision regulations are required, but there, but elements of them are required.
Specifically, the green space?
And so, so every, and we've actually extracted and created a standalone checklist that we go through for MOPs. And so we went through all of those elements, we went through all of those elements for this case.
I don't know if I got an answer.
Okay, yes, sir. We are...
Can I help you?
Yes.
If it, if it is denser than R1, how are regs read for the green space? If a subdivision is denser than R1, so that'd be R2, basically, sized lots, then that's when that requirement for green space kicks in.
It, for that, so then that requirement for green space, what? I didn't hear your answer. I'm sorry.
Okay, if it's denser than R1, sized zone lots, then, then, which would be your R2, R3, then you have the 10% green space.
You do have the 10%. Okay.
And I don't know about this one, I did not look at this one, but our requirement is denser than R1, then it requires a 10% green space.
Okay. And does we know that that meets this? I'm just, as I look at that, I, I'm just having a hard time picking out the green space again. What I'm trying to avoid are neighborhoods that just are void of any green space, I mean.
And so Chairman Commissioners, the, if you look back to the slide right here, the, the various green space areas, and we can, we can get the, get the engineer to eliminate, to illuminate, that is, to explain it in greater detail. But essentially here in phase one, you have that in the central areas...
Is that the GB one, two, and three?
So, so for example, right, if you notice in GB one, two, and three, so you have those areas, you have those various areas to the east of the clubhouse and to the west of the, of the buildings, and then a smaller area there in phase two.
These are the engineers' kind of highlight their plans, and a lot of times I answer those questions, Jack.
Okay, I understand. It's, kind of, if you look at GB four there, it's kind of some dead space there that's masking as green space.
And there's a significant slope on the other two in the center.
There is, there.
There, yeah, there's a, there's a maximum slope, I mean, sometimes it's three to one, sometimes it, after which it's not really usable green space, it's more of a pit. I'm not sure exactly where we are. I had, along those lines, I just had a question with the LID count, two questions. I couldn't find the constructed wetland. I know you, you went past it in a slide, I can't see it on the, how large is that? And exactly where is it?
So the constructed wetland is on, if you look at the inset drawing on this, on this slide right here, if you look at the drawing, look on the far right side, try kind of in the northeast area, it is circled, or it is clouded in red, and then marked as a CW.
Okay, but where is that on, oh, no, where is that on the overall plan? Is that phase one or phase two?
So that physically occurs in phase one, and so there is, let me move this pointer out of the way. Well, actually, here we go.
Is it like 10 by 20 or something?
So you don't have a pointer on your screen, my apologies. If you look on the far right, in the lower right-hand corner of that drawing, and you'll see an area on the far right, and it is marked CW.
How big is that, Buford?
Chairman, I'm gonna get the engineer to, I'm gonna get the, I'll ask, I'll defer that to the engineer to give the size, and I apologize, I don't have the, I don't have a drawing that we can zoom in on for dimension purposes.
Just one more minor clarification is, when LID, when pervious parking is required already by code, it seems like double-dipping to count that as an LID technique. And I recognize you clarified that it's not contributing to the TSS removal, but just, in my opinion, it seems like double-dipping if you're already required to do it, to get extra credit for it.
And Chairman, I certainly, certainly understand that comment, and... And Chairman, I certainly, certainly understand that comment, and as staff, we certainly respect that comment. It's allowable, it is, it's an allowable technique in the subdivision regulations, and that portion does not, does not specify, does not specify exact application, other than that you utilize an LID technique, but, so noted, certainly understood.
Well, I want to go back again now, and I look at this again, and see these GB zones, which are grass buffers, and those are LID techniques, can those LID regions be used to calculate the green space that's in the project? Or do they, are they not allowed to be counted as green space?
And Chairman Commissioners, that's a very good question here, and I don't have a calculation for that, I'm gonna defer that to the engineer. What I can tell you is that the LID techniques have the, one of the things that we've discovered as we're getting more and more familiar and seeing more and more LID techniques, is that the categories tend to overlap. And so, you have an LID technique for a greenway, and the wording of that one seems to, seems to appear that the greenway is a usable green space when it's not treating any stormwater material. So that way, when it does not process any flow, then it is a green space on its own. And I made the note in there that the swales in the green, in the, in the, the swales in the grass buffers, when they're not processing material, I think could, could, the argument could be made that they are greenways that are green space.
Do we have any definite, I mean-
That's a stretch.
Yeah.
No, no, in, in the regulations, the regulations require the green space be usable. So, the retention area is not green space. Green space is supposed to be usable. Now, the usable may not be that you play baseball, that it may be wooded, so the use may be to be a buffer from the neighbors to give, you know, privacy to each side, you know, not that you're squirrel hunting in there, but, but the green space is supposed to be usable, not just the water retention area in the dreg. So, the usable's not necessarily a baseball field, it's an appropriate use for that property. If that property's next door to a baseball field or the soccer complex, you know, maybe you're more interested in the buffer-
But you can't use any reason that's LID technique designated as one of the LID techniques. You can't count that as green space, though.
Well, possibly, in the earlier one we did, because that, it was creating, like in other words, a level spread area.
Yeah, the, the LID, I mean, you have some things, some LID techniques are just open fields, I mean, it's grass parking.
Could be an open field that has sand and soil that absorbs a little bit of water.
All right, last one I'm asking.
But, but it's very usable to go to play a baseball game. I mean, if you look at the football field, you know, in Fairhope, think how much water that thing absorbs, the way it's aerated, and all, as far as the rain, so, something like that could be used as a LID technique, even though it'd be very usable also.
I think it gets a lot fuzzier, we have to just have some discernment if it's, if it's maximized for public enjoyment or not, depending on the slope and how it is vegetated and what the configuration is.
Well, you know, there's so many questions, and, and we've got so many new people on the, on the commission, that I think we really need to have some meetings and go over and kind of give the input of why we've done things in the past certain ways, and what we need to tweak going toward the future, without a doubt, because there's, you know, we're, we're having a lot of discussion on every issue that's more kind of general discussion than discussion on the specific item that's brought up. But, but with that said-
Well, I didn't get a straight answer on whether or not that was included in the green spaces, so I think the question may be extending the meeting, but it was very valid.
No, no, I agree, but the engineer, see, we need to ask that too of the project, and he's, he should have all of those notes.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I can interject here-
Frankly, it's not Buford's job to sell the project, it's the engineer's job to say, hey, here's our green space here, it's how it works, and he's the one we need to-
I thought our staff might know how much of it was met, if the requirement has been met, though.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, if I can interject here, and I have just been politely corrected on something, and my apologies for my lack of memory here at this late hour, the green space requirements are not require, a requirement of an MOP. So that is not applicable, my apologies, I, I misremembered and misstated that. So it's not required in an MOP, that's one of the elements of an MOP that did not, that is not extracted from the subdivision regulations.
We need to fix that, H.
But even with the R5 zoning, it's not required?
Well, the, the MOP, the MOP paragraph in, in that section of the subdivision regulations, it lay, it lay, it lays out which sections of the subdivision regulations to utilize, and that section is not reflected in the MOP requirements.
Okay.
Thank you. Well, it is what it is, but I would, I'm gonna encourage the council to fix that, because that's a, you know, you get a denser, more denser development, and there's nowhere for people to enjoy the space, that makes no sense.
And, Mr. Chairman, and, and MOPs can be tough, they, they can be difficult. We certainly, certainly recognize that and respect, and respect, you know, the desires of the planning commission in that regard. A very brief statement here, after this item is concluded, I have a document that, that Ms. Emily has passed out to each of you, and so, there's an opportunity, there will be an opportunity to revisit the LID techniques.
Yeah. Well, one thing, I think, you know, we're talking so much about the numbers, and I really like the, the way we're going in the future, where we discuss more the percentage of treatment, rather than the numbers of how many boxes they check.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, and, and I hope I illuminated it well for the planning commission, just to reflect that on the application before us tonight, the drainage calculations we received reflect the entire treatment volume of the site.
Thank you, Buford. All right, I'll go ahead, and somebody from HMR like to speak at this time?
Good evening, I'm Tim Law over at HMR. Thank you, Buford, for giving such a detailed explanation. I don't have a whole lot to add to what he said, however, I will try to address some of the specific questions y'all had. Regarding the green space, even though it's not required, from what Buford's saying, I just want to go back to the slide we were looking at with Phase One, wherever it is, right here. Just, just for reference, you're looking at about 20 acres of property right there. The GB1 and GB2 out in the middle, I would venture to say are in the neighborhood of three to five acres apiece, both of those are usable green space areas. This, this whole piece of Phase One's open, y'all could all drive by and look at it, there's a dog park in GB2, there's a big flat area in GB1, a clubhouse, a swimming pool, a deck. There's 20% of the site roughly in green space, just alone in those two areas. So, I'd venture to say we're probably in the neighborhood, I don't have the exact numbers, but well over 10%, probably, if not in the 30 to 40% range. And regarding the constructed wetland size, again, you're looking at 20 acres, so, no, that's not 10 by 20 feet, that's probably in the neighborhood of 100 by 40 feet, something like that. Again, I don't know the exact dimensions, that was built two years ago, but it's, it's approximately 100 feet long, 20 feet wide, 30 feet wide, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. It doesn't show on our plans.
Tim, my question is, I've discussed with you the sidewalks, you know, I was kind of interested in the sidewalk along County Road 34 and County Road 3, and I see where y'all have stubbed out on each side, those sidewalks are gonna be public-
That's correct.
-for the public to use from surrounding areas, right?
That's correct.
I love, I think that's a fantastic thing, and I think that'll be nice for the people who live around there and add a lot of-
I think it will, too.
-utilization to them, you know, going through there. Any other questions for the engineer before I open the public hearing?
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Tim. I'm just about to open the public hearing at this time. One thing to remember is this is a MOP approval. In 98% of municipalities, these don't come to the planning and zoning commission, these actually go straight to a building official who does it himself. So, these aren't really, you know, the question here isn't, does Lee Turner personally like this plan, or does he not? It's, does this plan meet the city regulations that we have written up? So, as far as the comments, it's, it's eight o'clock, we have, you know, listened to the comments at the last meeting, and we'll listen again this meeting, but we got very, very clearly the comments last meeting that people did not care for, the water runoff and the turbidity of the water during the Phase One construction, and we understand that. I think having the pavement go down before Phase Two will make a lot of changes on that, but regardless, you know, we're looking at Phase Two on its own, so, when you do comment, please, let's keep the comments on Phase Two specifically, and how Phase Two does or does not meet the regulations required by the city, because that's what our decision is based upon. In that case, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing at this time. Anybody wish to speak to this item?
Mr. Turner, if I can also indicate that I did pass out additional letters that staff received, each of y'all should have had them at your place setting.
Yes, we did. Yes, sir.
Alan Jones, 178, 17861 Section Street, just south in the runoff area. If the only thing we can talk about is, does it meet the regulations, they've got all the numbers, I think that's just making, basically making the public be quiet, is my opinion, but-
Well, I'm just saying, you can talk about what you want, but I'm just saying, our decision should be, if we do this correctly, based upon, just like if this was Eric Cortinas in the City Department, does this meet, you know, looking at a house, does this meet the ordinances or not? That's, that's what our decision should be based upon.
Well, the calculations for runoff have been done at about 1.8 inches, and as we all know down here, that's an afternoon thunderstorm most every day. Last week, there were, pardon me, a couple, three weeks ago, I forget which, there was something between one and two inches of rain. After the runoff, it was clear coming through, past the property, leaving the property across Section Street, didn't flood the street, but across Section Street running at the golf course, it was very red, and when, after the thing, the golf course flew, or whatever it was over there, was red, because it had a lot of runoff in it. And 1.8 inches is the calculations that you've done to figure out, does it, are they treating all the water that runs off? So it's not very much. I find it interesting that the Red Barn, or whatever it was subdivision, is gonna require, they say they're going to require nine LID techniques on each of the 2.3 acres. We're doing, what, six here? So, I'm not sure that the runoff is gonna be, is gonna be controlled very well, and we're downstream from it, we have to put up with the, with the issues. That's all I've got.
Yes, sir.
Hello again, it's Carol Gordon at 17861 South Section Street. Thank you all again for letting me come, and I'm gonna try to adhere to what you're asking for. And I do believe that, that you guys got it completely right in May, when six of you said that this should be denied based on health, safety, and welfare, because health, safety, and welfare is about the enjoyment of the community, the safety of the people that live there. I have not heard one thing that's gonna be different in Phase Two, and I even got the opportunity to ask this developer directly, what are you going to do differently in Phase Two than you did in Phase One? And the answer was, Phase One was great. So, I don't understand why we would think that anything's gonna be any different, and the time and amount of money that has been spent by this staff in fielding all of the problems, by ADM, by your community, by you, is gonna continue. You have lots of good developers in this community, and I've finally come to the conclusion that this developer is not one of them. And his engineer keeps saying, these calculations, that we're not gonna have this turbidity, we're not gonna have the runoff, and it happens over and over and over. And ADM has, has even come in and probably given them the worst recognition of their practices of anybody in this community, and I find myself reticent to stand up here and talk against somebody, because they're good people, but this project has been a disaster, and I see nothing that you're being offered in this Phase Two that is gonna be any different when, from what happened in Phase One. So you should continue to deny based on health, safety, and welfare. You got it right, keep at it. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak to this item? In that case, I'll go.
Good evening, I'm Lexi Jones, and I live at 17861 Section Street. I think, having looked at this for some time, where I come down is, I hear all of the rules and regulations, and I respect rules and regulations, but they're there for a reason. When they do not accomplish the reason, which in our case, I, I believe to be because we receive more rainfall than whoever the regulations were initially designed for. I think, in my opinion, is the reason that we are the citizens, and you're the, the planning commission, is so that if what the regulations say are not working, that you can make the decision for what's best for the community, for the waterways, for the bay, for the environment, and I thank you for your service.
Anyone else wish to speak to this item?
Yes, I've been here before, too. Sorry, and I appreciate y'all taking the time to listen at this late hour.
Please say your name and address.
Oh, sorry, Bonnie Goolsby, 410 Bartlett Avenue. I live on the east side of this development, right about where that yellow line is. And because of your comment, Mr. Turner, I have cut probably two paragraphs. And what I did want to address is, again, the health and safety and welfare. And so, what I decided to do was write this down, because often when I come up here, I think when I get back home, gosh, I should have told him this, should have said this, whatever. So, bear with me as I read my thoughts. Phase One incurred 18 formal complaints to ADM, countless calls to the city, and four inspections conducted by ADM, of which all found deficiencies, and numerous concerning inspections by the city. Three times Hill Brothers sent noncompliance notification to ADM, and several stop orders were issued by ADM and the city. Most seriously, the development had enough serious issues to warrant an administrative order from ADM, requiring a stoppage of work at the site. And those are facts, factual facts. This development has caused multiple flooding incidents, and- Just 'cause y'all probably get bored. Here are pictures I've had over the last couple of years, just passing around, of all the flooding issues. And I've always felt that pictures speak a thousand words better than I do. It was cited, and this development had been cited, and stop order, stop order orders were numerous times. Phase Two is in the same location, is the same developer, same engineering firm, the same bad facts exist. And now, he wants variances from zoning laws related to stormwater. The profits go to the developer, while impacts are borne by the public, us, all of us, and the city. Thank you for hearing my thoughts. I do think, when you did this the first time, you did the right thing, and it is based on health, welfare issues, and that you can use as your base if you're fearful of legalities. I'm asking you to stand up with the recent decision, which was correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Beth Broadbeck, 18280 Section Street. My property, my, I own property to the north, and my family owns the entire property to the, the north boundary. First of all, Phase One and Phase Two, many of the calculations are being done together, so I think that it is, it is okay to talk about the phases together. The stormwater design is already built out for Phase Two. This has been an environmental disaster, and I'm not exaggerating when I say that. I think we've all seen the pictures. ADM has been called out numerous times, numerous stop work orders have been issued. I don't see anything that is changing, and are we gonna just continue down this road of more bad design and more bad construction practices? I have zero confidence in the stormwater design. I don't know that they're doing any, they're adding anything to what's already been out, that's already built, that's already out there. Yeah, and this is affecting hundreds of homes downstream. So, this, this is a big development that has completely changed this entire area, and- And this developer is going to make a lot of money off of this development. And we haven't seen really anything, any give back. The sidewalks, which I'd like some clarification on, is he building sidewalks on the streets? Do we have?
Uh, yes, he's connecting the, he's gonna allow the public to use the sidewalks and he's connecting them on.
So are there sidewalks on Section Street and Battles?
Uh, they're stubbing each direction.
So, but there's not sidewalks on Section Street and Battles?
The sidewalk to come through.
But the only people that are going to use those sidewalks are the people that are within the development. So, you know, I also know that the city has put out a grant proposal or a grant request to put sidewalks in on Section Street and Battles. What I would love to see is a partnership between the developer and the city to help pay for that. Instead of, instead of him building sidewalks along those roads. Maybe the city could develop, build those roads and the developer pay for that. So, yeah, I just, I don't understand how the sidewalk, sidewalks, well, I'd like to see more sidewalks. Also, when this development was originally zoned, it was originally zoned, it was a completely different development. And the original, it was a hundred and fifty units, then it was a hundred and ninety-two units. Those are all homeowner, those are all owned by the, those are all owned by the homeowner. And now we're going up to two hundred and three units. So we, this is a very different development now. Alright, thanks, I just really don't like this design.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else wish to speak to this item?
Carol Gordon again, I forgot, just like Bonnie, I forget. But the sidewalk issue, the way I'm reading this is they're just building an, an arter, arterial to, on either side. So you will walk through their property to get through these sidewalks that they're building. So they're really not doing anything but putting a little artery out. Is that correct? Am I reading that correctly?
Ask the developer to give a better explanation of the sidewalk.
Yeah, because I don't, I don't think they're actually building any sidewalks, they're just claiming it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Bo Broadbeck, eighteen two eighty Section Street, you heard from my wife a minute ago. I'd just like to add a couple points. As I kind of sat through the presentation, I apologize, I don't get these documents ahead of time to be able to study them and look through the numbers and check to see what I think about them. I do have some background in forest hydrology. Having lived there on the site, it was a forested site. It's going to capture seventy percent of that stormwater runoff. We develop it, development has to happen, it's going to change. And if we go back and think about this idea of low impact development, what's the point of this? You know, it's, we keep throwing L I D down, but I think we forget what we're talking about here. And we kind of go back and think about that. And as I look at the things that we've gone through, it feels like we're just, we're hitting the bare minimums. And then we're asking for variances to not even make the bare minimums. I mean, I look at the constructed wetland, I mean, it's pushed off to one side, it's not very big. Where it looks like some double dipping possibilities. And it's just, we're going to live with this property for a long time. We have other developments happening in the area. We have, what, five hundred units coming in across the street with RSA. The place is continuing to build and develop. And if we're going to only hit the minimums, and not even the minimums, every single time, we're going to have these problems for a very long time. And I'm a neighbor, I'm, I'm right there, I live with it. I'm fortunate to be on the north side where I don't deal with the stormwater that some other folks are probably going to deal with in the future. So I think we need to think about these things carefully, not just next year or the year after. We already know, Phase One, we've already seen failures. And so what's going to happen to Phase Two, what's going to happen five years from now? So keep that in mind, thank you.
Thank you, yes, sir. Who else wants to speak? In that case, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn the meeting over to the commissioners. Tim, can you explain the sidewalk and how that will be able to be utilized by people, not just in the complex, but out of the complex, please?
You mind if I just address a few of the other items that, that brought up as well? I just made some notes. Not much, as I'm sure everybody is ready to get out of here. The first, first comment was about the one point eight inch stormwater design. The, the one point eight inches is purely for a water quality standpoint, that's what it's referred to as the first flush. The pipes and the tension areas and all that are sized by the federal IDF curves for this area. So, and in fact, y'all's one point eight inches is the strictest of anywhere I've worked in. Most people's are one inch to one and a half inch. So that's, that's well above the norm. Regarding ADEM and multiple violations, uh, ADEM did come to the site quite often because they were called every time we got a big rain. We did get one stop work order from ADEM. We actually had it fixed before we even got the paperwork for them. Other than that, we had zero violations from them. We had one incident with ADEM through the entire project. The sidewalks is the next item I have. In Phase One, we were not required to do sidewalks. Initially in Phase Two, we did not propose any sidewalks. Two months ago, when we were here before this body, y'all requested that we wanted some sidewalks. We took another look at the regs and still don't believe that the M O P actually requires us to do sidewalks. Just similar to the green space, the requirement for sidewalks is in that same section. It does refer to the construction standard side, uh, construction standard section of the regs where it tells you how thick sidewalks are and how wide they are, but not the actual requirement that you have to have them. In an effort to work with everybody though, we, we kind of met in the middle and devised a plan that would provide the same functionality of putting sidewalks down the road, which means if somebody is coming down Battles Road and they want to get from there to the intersection or to our property line on the north section, they have a way to do that. Same with someone coming down Section Street, they have a way to get to the intersection as well as get to the east side of our property on Battles Road. So the, the, what we're proposing provides the same functionality as having sidewalks down the road would. And then lastly, to address the, the comment that was made that we're doing the bare minimum as far as design. As Buford stated, as stated in our drainage calculations, the, the water quality treatment volume we provided is almost two times what is required. So I would venture to say we're on the, the far side of that, we're almost double what's required. So I, I can't see how that would be interpreted as a bare minimum approach to the design.
Can you also explain right now that drainage from Phase One is really, it's necessary to have the Phase Two? Because there's a, the Phase One drainage, whether we did it right or wrong, not, is not connected at this point, is it? Can you explain that?
It, it is temporarily connected at this point. When Phase One was designed, there wasn't a hard layout for Phase Two. Obviously, there's a lot of stormwater and offsite water that comes through our site. So in lieu of putting a forty-eight or fifty-four inch pipe in the ground that we might have to dig back up, we dug a ditch and a temporary riprap flume into the pond. Once Phase Two is completed, that ditch will be removed and it'll be piped from the end of the pipe of Phase One all the way to the pond.
Any other questions for the engineer?
Yeah, is the, in your opinion, do you think that the phasing of that stormwater installation is the cause? You're saying there, there weren't many issues with ADEM, we're hearing totally different planets here from different sides. And I'm looking at some of the photographs. Do you think all that turbidity was, was a result of the phasing of the stormwater system?
If you want my honest answer, I, I think a lot of that turbidity was due to the rain we had last year. And we had same problems on other jobs. And this one, you just happen to have an outfall right by the street and you happen to have a hundred and fifty people driving by it every time it rains and looking and making phone calls that don't happen on other jobs. And I, I'm not saying it excuses it, but, but similarly, similarly, the staff can attest to this. Every time we got a notice of violation from the city, I went down to the city's detention pond down there on Section Street that drains all the water from downtown. A fully developed area and it's just as dirty as the water coming off our site. And if nobody believes it, next time it rains six inches, go take a look at it. A, a six or seven inch rain is going to create turbidity. It, it, it's, it's just a fact of life. I, I don't care what B M Ps you put in, I don't care if it's a two acre site, I don't care if it's a fifty acre site. If you get six inches of rain on a construction site, you're going to have turbid water. And there's only so much you can hold back. That, that's why ADEM has the upset event and the noncompliance report. Because they realize that, hey, after you get so much rain, your B M Ps are ineffective. And it just so happens, I mean, we got seven or eight, you know, four or five inch plus rain events last year. And it was, it was a bad, it was a unfortunate time for construction. And I know, I'm not saying that's an excuse, I'm just telling you the reality of the situation.
Building the, the road first, at least the base of the road first.
Right.
Would make a tremendous difference.
Yeah, and, and what we have done different on this phase is the whole site's not going to be under construction at one time. You know, in, in the last phase, the roads, the buildings, the whole site was under construction. And that's, unfortunately, that's when we got the majority of the rain. This site will be built more like a traditional subdivision. They're going to come in, they're going to build the roads, put in the drainage, we're going to base the roads, get everywhere disturbed, seed and mulched, and then we'll come back in and build the buildings. So it'll be very similar to how a typical subdivision is constructed versus just doing the whole twenty acres at one time.
So that goes back to, didn't the city pass new regulations concerning land disturbance during construction phases may be largely brought about by Phase One?
I, I think it was largely. I, I think it was in the future upcoming Publix project, I think.
And do you think that that'll have a significant impact on the runoff and the turbidity that people see in Phase?
I think, I think it will.
Phase Two?
I think it will.
Mr. Johnson, do you, do you think so? As, as someone that's a, a civil engineer that works for the city?
I, I, I do, but I, I think you've also got to understand is that especially when red clay is present, you're going to get discoloration of runoff when you get certain size events. But what we're really concerned about is sediment loss in the site. And it absolutely will improve sediment loss. But, you know, red clay turns water red. And whether it has a small percentage of sediment or a large percentage of color is generally the same. But there's no doubt that, that treating every building pad as an individual B M P'd site, meaning that they're, that, that you're, you're B M P'ing the construction site for the whole site as well as each individual component. And, and also making sure you're not collecting water in streets that aren't paved or bays. So that, that's going to make a big difference, whether it's going to fully satisfy if we have a six, seven inch rain event. I, I, I think turbidity is, is a reality. The one way to end turbidity is when this, once this site is fully developed and every unit has a lawn and landscaping and everything is paved and all the sidewalks are in, that's when, you know, understand, L I D techniques are really post-development stormwater quality. Not necessarily doing a whole lot for you during construction. So, I mean, the, the best way to resolve the discharge, discoloration and sediment loading is to get the site completed and stabilized, landscaped, vegetated and, and that thing. That's, that's when you're going to see the full, full effect of the system. Thank you.
I have another question for the engineer.
Tim?
Tim. So the, the gentleman that said that some of these requirements were based on a one point inch rain, and I believe that they were, that they're based on a twenty-five year storm, is that correct?
That's correct, there's two different, there, there's the, the quantity, which is the detention and, and holding back the volume. That's based on all the way up to a hundred year storms. So we sized the pond for a stage event, we look at the two year, the five year, the ten year, twenty-five. Actually, I added one in there, so it's the two, the five, ten, twenty-five, fifty and a hundred.
So what kind of, put that, put that in layman's terms, how much of a rain should that hold back?
The, the hundred year storm is somewhere in the neighborhood of thirteen inches of rain. And so that should during a twelve to thirteen inch rain event, you would still be getting the same release rate that you would under predeveloped conditions. It's not going to hold it all back, but the ideal is it holds enough back so that you get the same runoff as before the site was developed. Now, that same runoff will occur for a longer period of time. It may, it may discharge for ten hours as opposed to two hours after it stops raining or whatever.
And is that discharge going to be a single point discharge or a multi-point discharge? Because, you know, we run into problems with that, I believe, when, when single point discharges are approved. And sometimes instead of it being spread over four hundred feet, it's spread over four feet.
Right. And, and, and I would not disagree that in certain applications, multi-point discharges are, are definitely a better system. In this particular application, when all of the site drains to a ditch on the south side, or the north side of Battles Road, it's all getting to that ditch one way or the other. So my philosophy is you get it in one point, you armor the ditch right there and you limit, you limit the chance for erosion in that ditch by getting, getting into the ditch at one location.
You know, one thing to remember is the, the L I D doesn't necessarily have anything to do with the discharge rate. It can, because some of the techniques might have water absorbed rather than, than runoff. But, but they're more for purification where the runoff.
Yeah, I wasn't, my, my questions weren't related to L I D, just, just runoff in general. Because the way I see it, the Publix concern is not quite exclusively related to runoff, but the vast majority of the concerns are due to runoff. We're not, we're, you know, other than the comments about, you know, these are now apartments versus single owned units, you know, family owned units, you know, condos or whatever. That's one argument. But I'm, I'm hearing most people's concerns are stormwater management.
Sure, turbidity, absolutely.
And has, I don't mean to interrupt, though.
No.
Has, have, have y'all had a chance to read and have you, I'd like to hear your thoughts on this report by Mobile Baykeeper? It looks like, it was pretty notable that the rainfall, there was a one point seventy, seven five inch, inch rainfall. But they had to get maybe three quarters of a mile down Point Clear Creek before they could get to a point where the turbidity meter could actually measure turbidity because it was so much higher than what they could measure up until then. And, and there's a lot more in there, but I, I'm assuming you've seen, you've seen this?
No, I have not. I, I would like to say though that directly downstream of our site, the, the drainage area for that creek is twelve hundred acres and our site is forty of that. So it, it's not all a problem caused by our site. We're, we're a drop in the bucket compared to, and then you get on a mile or two downstream of our site, you're adding on, I'm saying it's twelve hundred acres. Right there at the, right there at the intersection of Battles and Section, there's about a thousand, twelve hundred acres drained in that intersection.
Cropland, correct? A lot of it was cropland?
Uh, cropland, uh, our, our development, Old Battles Village, was that to the north of Old Battles Village? Hawthorne, is that, that's not Hawthorne Glen, Huntington Woods.
I don't recall them having to repair a road from cropland runoff.
Do I know?
I said, I don't recall them having to repair a, a road and, and close the road from cropland runoff.
That, we talked about this two years ago, we talked about it three months ago. There, there's, there's a hundred and twenty acres drained in the northeast side of that intersection. There's one thirty inch pipe installed in that. I notified the county of that before we ever started construction. We have since installed, with the help of the county, three additional pipes. With the three additional pipes, that the culverts are still only sized to handle a twenty-five year storm. So it, it was, the one pipe that was there is about fifteen percent of what should have been there. And I can remember that intersection flooding when I was sixteen or seventeen years old, driving around. It, the intersection has flooded ever since I've been driving a vehicle. It has nothing to do with, with what we've built this. Now, yes, it, does it look worse when the, than when there's red water coming over the road? Sure, I'm not going to argue that point. But the, the development has no, no effect on the flooding at that intersection. And, and the money that's spent to add the culvert should reduce the times that intersection floods. But we get a ten or twelve inch rain, it's still going to flood.
Any further questions? Alright, thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Alright, in that case, I'll turn the. Turning over to commissioners, comments, questions, motions. I like the sidewalk that people can get from Battles Village down to the intersection at least. It'd be nice to be able to get the colony to connect the sidewalk in that area.
You looking for a motion?
I am.
A motion, Mr. Chairman. Case number S D eighteen point two seven, Old Battles Place, Phase Two. I move that this be approved subject to staff recommendations.
I have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
One final question for staff. In their staff's comments, under the health and welfare portion, there was a questionnaire that would be, that could be a condition of denial. In fact, under approved standards, E, it says, proposed subdivision otherwise endangered the health, safety, welfare of property within the planning jurisdiction of the city. It says that we meet the regulations on that, is that staff's recommendation?
Yes, sir, this has been reviewed, meets our regulations, yes, sir.
But it, it, in regards to health, safety, welfare or property?
Mr. Chairman, it meets our, meets our regulations. As far as health, safety, and welfare, I think that's kind of a catch-all. That's, that's, I mean, we look, that's sort of an ambiguous term. We look at it from the point of, it meets our regulations. And I, I don't think we're qualified to say, is it going to be, meet the health, safety, and welfare? I assume that our regulations are based on health, safety, and welfare. And so if that's the case, then it meets our regulations, and I would say yes.
I have a question. I would like to ask the Planning Commission what you think has changed since our last meeting that this was denied? What, what, what has changed?
Well.
Besides sidewalks?
I, I can say this, sidewalks have changed, number one. Number two, just because it was denied last meeting doesn't, not necessarily mean to me that that was a correct decision. It had a, it had a, last meeting, it had a staff recommendation to approve. So to me, we either approve or we find a regulation that it does not, that it does not meet. And when you deny it based on health, safety, or welfare, that's like saying in those flooding areas out west where you get a 30-foot wall of water pushing trees down, that if kids are playing out back, they get swept off by, by the water and, and killed, that hey, that's not an appropriate location for that. Where here, we've got something zoned R5, the staff says it meets all regulations, we can't, you know, I drove through the original, and I thought it looked pretty darn nice. I think, you know, there was a lot of problems, we did have a lot of rain. I don't totally agree with Tim, though. I thought that there was a little bit of arrogance in Phase One, that, you know, I saw a lot of turbidity in half-inch rains, and, you know, that bothered me. But when I look at it and put on my commissioner's hat, not, you know, the hat of the person that drives by going to the colony every single day to work out, you know, I say, well, what regulations does this not deny? Because this is, again, this is more like a building permit. This is not like a rezoning, you know, where we have to think and have a lot of say. If we deny it, we basically, to me, got to tell them before they come back in two months, why we denied it as far as what they can change. It's not just, no, sorry, we don't want Phase Two there. They've got private property rights with an R5 zone piece of property to do what's within the regulations and the law to do. If somebody comes in to Eric Cortinas for a building permit on their, on their lot, and Eric says, no, I don't think I want you to build there, and you say, well, what regulations am I violating? Nah, just, you know, it's a couple doors down from my house, and, you know, my kid's playing that lot, and I just don't really want a house there.
To use that example, though, what, what teeth do we have if somebody goes to Eric Cortinas and says, I want to build on half my lot, and sure, I'll follow regulations, and then they don't? And then, you know, third parties measure turbidity and it doesn't? And then they, they don't admit, yes, we had a problem, here's how we're going to fix it? They say there wasn't a problem, and we're going to do the same thing? That, that, to me, is more the heart of the issue, is are we being told that our only, if, if there was a problem and it hasn't been really fully addressed, we're, again, being asked to take a leap of faith when that went very wrong the first time?
Well, I think it's as Richard said, you know, our staff engineer, that in an eight-ten inch rain, you're going to have problems no matter what, number one.
Some of these measurements were not eight-ten-inch rain.
Number two, I think having the, the road base put down to start with would make a difference.
You asked what changed, the question was what has changed? Has that not changed since the last time this was considered? The land disturbance regulations?
Not since the last time Phase Two was considered, since Phase One was.
And now, as, as Councilman Burrell has mentioned, they have changed. I mean, we learned from that issue that happened a year and a half ago, we did change it to try to address those concerns. So I think as far as, if you're asking me from Phase One, the problems we had with that, as, as opposed to today, I think it'll be much better because we have changed our regulations and tried to address that. I think the biggest issue here is, is that in 2006, this property was on R5. R5 allows up to 10 units per acre. That, that's 2006, I don't think anybody was here in 2006 when that happened. That's the bigger issue, but that's what it is. We cannot go back and change that. If you were asking me today, would we zone this R5 today? Probably not. But that's, that's, it is what it is. And so, you know, with that R5 comes certain entitlements to develop a certain way, and, it's our job as staff to ensure that they have followed, followed the rules and regulations, and, you know, I think they've done that. The question was asked about public safety, health, and welfare, I think that our regs are based off of that, so I, I think that's part of our, our process we go through. Those regulations are based to try to mitigate any kind of concerns from that standpoint, and I think they have. I know it's not popular, I know that people don't want it there, but in, in 2006, that's, that is what it is. And so from staff's perspective, we can't go back and undo that.
Holly, I'll tell you my perception, and I wasn't here in, in May, when this case was heard the first time, but I did read the minutes, and it appeared to me that the decision that the commission made, I think we talked about this at our special meeting not too long ago, a special call meeting, but what I saw was a denial based on the health, safety, and welfare of the public. But there were, there, there was no explanation at all of what the issue with health, safety, and welfare was. In cases that, that I've been involved with in other, in another planning commission, if you wanted to state that, say, the health, safety, and welfare of the public, realistically, you needed to give exact examples of what that health, safety, and welfare issue was. And I didn't, I, I just thought it was real subjective, and, and what's, what's changed now is, that's why, that's why I asked Buford, does this meet our regulations? And yeah, I, and I agree with Wayne, it's not, it's not popular, but sitting up here on this commission is not a popularity contest.
That's right.
It's whether that meets the regulations. And as we talked about in our special call meeting, if we don't like the regulations, then, then, then we need to change them. We need to hear from the public. Public needs to advise us as to whether the regulations are, are acceptable or not, and if they're, i- i- if it's something that maybe we should look into changing, then certainly we, we've done that.
And I will say, and I voted for it the first time. I mean, I, I wasn't necessarily against it then, but, but I've had the, the privilege of sitting in several meetings, and, and the discussion of how can we change how the, first phase was done, so that we can minimize that impact in the second phase. I think there's been some progress made. And, and, you know, I'm not perfect, I don't think anybody else here is, but if we can learn from our mistakes and try to do better, and then if we can be better from whatever we find in Phase Two that may be something we can improve, I think we need to keep improvement. I think Wayne, uh, Art, I'm sorry, and, yeah, I would invite the public to participate truly, and, and I think your voices have been heard, and, and I think that in the discussion of how to plan this project and get it done, I think we've, we've made some progress there. I know it may not seem that way to everybody, but I think we have, and I think we'll try to continue to make progress. But, but I do think that, that it's meeting the requirements, and I think that that's what we have an obligation to, that's, you know, if, if we change the requirements, then we'll be able to follow those changed requirements next time, and I think that's the way it should be.
And I'll say this, you know, I, I was here in 2006, and I can't say this was a slam dunk one way or the other, but we have to understand when we were making the decision then, was it was unzoned. And some of the people in this meeting today actually spoke on behalf of it in that meeting. And when you look at the density, this density is lower than they could build on if this was unzoned. And it could be, you know, a lot worse than this, it could be a 30,000-square-foot machine shop, you know, or a party venue that, like what my office is next door to, starts making noise at 6:30 in the morning, mornings, noise until midnight. So it wasn't like the decision back when it was rezoned was, do you want this R1 rolling estates and five-acre lots? Or do you want, you know, an apartment here? It was basically, you know, we would like to do this with the property, and the density won't be any greater, it'd actually be less than what would be allowed on unzoned property. Have to be exact, what, four versus 10 houses, something like that. So anyway, but, but I agree. I mean, I think if we deny it, we have to say a reason of why we're denying it, as in what they can change to have it, have it come back. I think the health and welfare, if this had been a, some type of a plant where there was a lot of lead in the ground, and you were worried about kids getting, you know, lead poisoning or something like that, then you can point to a specific item.
Well, my item's always been stormwater runoff, it's always been that. I've had an item, it wasn't like I just didn't have an item.
We all clearly discussed that.
It was six, it's, it, these six, six techniques out of 10 in 21 locations seems less than minimal. It's concerning, and we've seen the results of it, so, and when I read stormwater standards, it doesn't, it doesn't match.
But on the other hand, they're, they're taking twice the solids out that our regulation requires. So if it's that unhealthy to have those BMPs or what have you later, then do we need to change our requirements to double it again? I mean, it's not unsafe that you have six versus 12 versus 15 versus one LID technique. If the LID tech, if you have one LID technique, but it's doing everything it needs to do, you're cleaning the water as much as if you have 16 items.
Well, and we, hopefully that regulation changes in the future, but in the present, that's all we have to hang our hat on. And I, it seems, I do appreciate the steps that the staff took to have more oversight during construction, and appreciate treating a little bit more. I, I would like to have seen even more, you know, in, in acknowledgement of runoff that did happen and damages that were done in the first phase, and whether it was the phasing or just the construction practices, I, I would like to have seen an admission of that, and, and maybe here's what we're going to do to give back to the city, to the bay, to the people after dumping all that silt in the waterways.
Yeah, but, you know, we're, we're attacking them, but the subdivision just to the east is dumping as much turbid water in, and nobody's said a word about that one, you know? And you go by and look at that retention pond, the one to the east of theirs. I mean, I drive by there, you know, twice a day, and, and that one's just as bad, but we're not going-
Are they expanding?
Trying, no, but we're not trying to shut them down or find them, we're collinading on them. Oh, yeah, I get, no, you're right, it sure is on the backside of it, not on that side, but yeah, you're right. Anyway, any further discussions? In that case, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, so we have two nays, the two ays, got that, Emily? So it passes five to two. All right, moving on. Old, new business. Talk fast.
I can certainly do that. Mr. Chairman, the next item is a result of some of the past problems we've, we've experienced with denied applications.
Wait a minute, Wayne, just a minute.
Right now?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is sort of a result of some issues we've experienced in the past few months with denied applications. The amendment that has been drafted, just a proposal to the Planning Commission, would allow someone to resubmit if they are addressing the concerns that were expressed by the Planning Commission in that denial. It's as simple as that. If they are addressing that, then they can resubmit. As you know, that when you're denied, you can't resubmit anything for six months. This would be one alternative that would be allowed within the six months. Again, it would be purely to address any concerns or comments of which the application was denied on. And if the Planning Commission is so inclined, we would propose having this on the next agenda, advertise it, have it on the next agenda for adoption.
That's great, I think, because we don't have to do it, right? It just gives us the option to-
That's right, gives you the option to.
Let me tell you the theory behind this. The 180 days, and I won't go into all the, the details of where that came from, but it's been in the city ordinance for an extremely long period of time. It was put there because of, for one reason, many, many, many years ago. And personally, back then, I felt like it was, it was too restrictive. I thought that it, at, at one point, it didn't pertain to everyone, it only pertained to a few. But now it pertains to everyone, and I just think it's, it's too restrictive if you've got somebody that wants to bring a plat, and we don't approve it, we don't approve of it, it just doesn't seem likely that they should have to wait 180 days to come back to us, if they materially change that plat based on our recommendations.
Is there, is there precedent from other cities? I mean, what, what is the, is our 180 days way out of the norm for other municipalities?
I, I've been doing this for nearly 25 years, I don't think I've ever heard of, I mean, typically, if you're going to correct it, you can resub, you can resubmit something different. You can't resubmit the same thing again, but you can resubmit something different, and at any point in time.
I don't think, the county doesn't have it, do they?
No.
No, we never had.
Well, I mean, not, not when Richard and I were there.
Oh, yeah, but that was 200 years ago.
But, I mean, this, again, this would be, you know, permissive, as long as they're addressing the concerns that were expressed, or, and during the denial by the Planning Commission. Hopefully, we won't have denial, we'll have a tabling, then correct it during the tabling process, but there are times when things, they do get denied, like we had a couple months ago, which, you know, this will be out, an alternative for them to try to, you know, mitigate any kind of concerns.
What's the process for changing it?
Resubmit a new application fee, new application.
No, I mean, changing the subdivision regulations.
Oh, just need authorization from the Planning Commission to advertise it, and then we'll have it on the next agenda for adoption.
Is it a public hearing?
Yes.
I make a motion, we approve the recommendation for advertising and consider it the next meeting.
Do I have a second?
Yep.
Any further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And next, I think Buford's going to give a dissertation on low-impact development?
Yes.
Buford's going to get hung, too.
Chairman Commissioners, we need to discuss-
Waver, waiver, waiver.
We need, we need to, we need to discuss the, I've already forgotten what we call it when we're analyzing our compatibility analysis. Chairman Commissioners, we passed out, Emily passed out to you before the meeting, the Section F of the, of the subdivision regulations regarding stormwater. This is for your review. The changes are in two forms. If it is additional wording, it is in underline form. If it is to be deleted, it is in strike-through. The most prominent change, proposed change, is at the bottom of page 64, and the top of page 65, and then the bottom of page 69. We are considering and contemplating having a work session prior to the next Planning Commission meeting to discuss just this item. And what this item involves is, again, the requirement for 10 LID techniques. In summary, the change would be to remove the requirement for 10 and add the following statement. The intent of the requirement for use of LID, the LID techniques is that the development shall implement as many LID techniques as practical and appropriate for the development. Plans and calculations shall show the efficacy of each LID technique, include quantitative, quantitative analysis of their performance with reference to the plans and so forth. Also adding a reference to the Alabama LID handbook that I referenced several times tonight. Allowing that handbook as a resource opens up the opportunity for additional LID techniques, not contemplated by the subdivision regulations. Again, our intention is to discuss this in depth with the Planning Commission before the next meeting in a work session.
Chairman, this, again, is back to some of our comments before, you know, we are, this is a results-oriented type change.
Yes.
Just like the last application, they met their 80% removal requirement, they didn't meet the techniques that were required, so the result was the same. They just didn't meet the certain techniques, which is why we have all the waivers for, because sometimes the land just doesn't support those weight, those techniques. This is much more a results-based, you can do it as long as it's, it's in the LID manual, and as long as you're meeting that results of 80% removal.
Well, makes sense to me, I think it's a lot better, much better improvement, I like the, and I like the way you put in that you encourage them to use as many techniques as possible, because you, you know, want them to keep thinking outside of the box.
Chairman Commissioners, and, and it is in the best interest of the developer and their engineers of record to utilize as many techniques as is practicable on a site, because it divide, the more techniques you utilize, it divides up the treatment volume. And so by dividing up the treatment volume among different techniques, it allows you to better utilize a site, and, and, and as was heard earlier tonight, possibly improve a situation. So certainly, it's in their best interest to use multiple techniques, but invariably, each application we see is generally five or six. Is, appears to be the sweet spot based upon- Um, is, appears to be the sweet spot based upon the applications we've seen, uh, that we've seen recently.
Could've got nine poor soils, that's about all you could have.
And Chairman, also, Chairman, Commissioners, some, depending upon utilizing a site, dividing up the treatment volume among a site, and then developing the site, utilizing one technique may negate another. So it's, uh, it's a bit of a moving target. And also, the category, categories of the techniques, some of the categories overlap. And that's especially so when you look at the much more detailed research that's in the Alabama LID handbook. Um, they use multiple names and categories for different types of things. So I think we're, by referencing that document, it certainly opens up the, it opens up greater opportunities for different LID techniques on a site, but not necessarily 10 labels. So we would like to, would like to, um, discuss that at a work session before next meeting.
That would be great.
At 4 o'clock, Buford, don't we talk about 4 o'clock?
That's what we, that's what we discussed, having a work session at 4:00 PM prior to the August meeting.
That's good.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have more of new business. And you gotta live with me, dude. It's not just hurrying out of here. We're trying to set a new record here tonight. I, I think that we need to also put on that work session a discussion of, of, um, imposing green space on multiple, on multi-occupancy projects. And as I was thinking about it, you know, there's a, a 10% for anything over R1. Maybe we can tie it to density. The more dense you are, the more green space percentage-wise you gotta have. The less density you have, you know, maybe you have that 10% minimum. But then if you go to a higher density and, you know, then, then you may have to have more green space. We have got to quit having cookie cutter neighborhoods and these vanilla developments. We have got to be a community where people get outside and, and, and enjoy green space that God's given us in this area.
Right.
And we, we have got to get firm on this, guys, and women, we've got to.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think that would be, I, I like that suggestion many times. The denser you have, the smaller lots that you have, so you don't have as much space to even go in your backyard, and offsetting that with more green space away from that, more public space.
Maybe we can do that on, you know, R2, 3, whatever, not just, uh, mops.
We will certainly bring back a proposal for you for that, that work session and hand it out before, and when we get it finished, we'll hand it, we'll send it out to everybody, let them look at it. I think that's a good idea.
I think we need to define what green space to a lot of us is. When I think of green space, I don't think of anything that has anything to do with a water runoff. I think of bocce balls and volleyballs and stock ponds and kayaking places and, and really good green spaces that people can enjoy.
Well, typically, it's broken into active spa, active recreational space and passive recreational space, and that's why, how it's typically broken down. We talk about courts, those kind of things that's more active. We can certainly, uh, put something together and further define it.
Like you look at, Stone Creek did a fantastic job of green space. I mean, all of their ponds are fully stocked. That becomes a recreational space as well as an environmental growth for that. And there's, I mean, the, it's, it's well-done, and it, people like it, it's maintained.
Right, the, the one thing I would tell you, when we talk about ponds as green space or open space, that's, gets a little bit slippery slope, no pun intended with that, but it's, uh...
Well, I can just use the edge, you gotta find a way to calculate it.
You gotta be careful not to use, 'cause once again, then you're, then they're gonna use retention as green space.
And we don't wanna put too much emphasis around the pond, because you do have small children that may, may not be able to swim and getting into the pond, and occasionally you have different, uh, wildlife that gets into ponds and so forth. So you kinda gotta be aware of that as well, that, so, but we'll certainly put something together for you and see if that meets your approval.
We definitely need to move forward with a mop, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, because that's a loophole that needs to be closed.
And, and Mr. Chairman, if you, if, if the board, if the Planning Commission's so inclined, we, if you, we give a motion, we can also include that in our amendment for the next meeting and put it on the agenda, if the Planning Commission wants to move forward with the open space requirements for the mop, uh, the 10% open space. We can do that as well. That'd be very easy to change and bring that forward as an amendment.
If you wanna just do a simple 10%, if you wanna do, kinda like Jack's talking, and maybe make it progressive based on the density, we might wanna look at it and then do it the next meeting and decide if we wanna go back and, you know, like right now, we don't require any water, you know, any, um, green space on R1. And I, a lot of times, thought that's a mistake when you get an R1 that has 115,000 square-foot lots. You know, if people are coming in and building 4,000 square-foot houses on those 15,000 square-foot lots, they're not having a lot of playroom left. And, you know, we, we may wanna acquire a little bit of green space on the R1 and graduate it up. But I'm, either option.
I think we probably oughta have a work session, or at least discuss it in a work session.
Agreed.
To get some basis, and it may be something we have to massage a little bit later, but, yeah, it'd be nice to say, you know, anything that's applied for after, say, the, the next meeting, that that's a minimum 10%, but I think with a very short discussion, we could come up with some other ideas to be progressive.
I'd like to fold another layer into it. I mean, just to add on to what both of you have said, that we're talking about green space for stormwater, for human use, passive and active recreation, but it's also important for biodiversity. And we're one of the world's biodiversity hotspots. Um, and that's, maybe we could sort of tweak our definition of, um, I keep thinking that in the LID techniques, that we talk about these vegetated buffers, we talk about grass strips, but you, some of it could lead towards just a big turf, you know, a sea of turf, which is not really aesthetically pleasing unless you're playing golf. Um, and it doesn't have the same benefits as something that's a little more biodiverse that might have habitat for monarchs and things that, that migrate through here. There's some other, there's some examples of municipalities that have addressed that. It'd be interesting to talk about it at a work, work session and see if we could find a practical way to address that.
Y'all are thinking, clubhouses provide a recreation area that's kind of common to the whole neighborhood if it's a, you know, a senior citizen living. I mean, you know, there's a lot of ways to enjoy yourself, and in the middle of summer in the air conditioning's not a bad one of them.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Better yet, if you want to...